Unfortunately, the mayor's going a little bit under the weather, so he's not going to be able to join us this evening. So with that said, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for zoning matters. The rules of order for public hearings zoning matters are as follows. The hearing shall be presided over by the mayor or mayor pro tempore. After calling the hearing to order, the mayor shall request that parcels of property which are the subject of the zoning proposal be identified and read. Following such identification and reading, the development director's recommendation shall be presented. The mayor and city council shall cause the director's written recommendations to be made a part of the record. Proponents of each zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of ten minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning the zoning decision. If all ten minutes are not used, the proponents remaining time may be reserved for a while. Opponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of ten minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning each zoning decision. The presentation times may not be reduced, but may be extended by majority, but provided they are expanded equally for proponents and opponents. Anyone wishing to speak must come to the microphone and give their name and address to the city clerk. Do not speak unless you have the microphone and have been recognized. The first item on the agenda tonight is PC 2019-522-5238 Peachtree Road, also known as the Pruitt Health DCI.
Thank you, Mayor, pro tempore and council. As mentioned, this is a DCI for Pruitt Health, and also the applicant has requested thirteen concurrent variances and two waivers. The address 5238 Peachtree Road, and the site is transit-oriented development, approximately 2.8 acres. In this case, the applicant is proposing to construct a five-story office building with a fitness center and cafe. The variances include a variance to reduce the amount of open space that is impervious, to reduce the amount of open space that is publicly accessible, to increase the height of retaining walls, to allow some above-ground utilities to be located in front of the proposed building, between the building and the street, to allow wall signs on spaces that are not separate tenant spaces, to increase the width of the supplemental zone along Malone Drive, to also increase the height of the supplemental zone. Several variances are requests related to the parking deck, the first being that the parking deck to not be screened from the adjacent right-of-way. Variance nine, to not provide decorative elements screening on all sides, has been withdrawn by the applicant, so we do recommend that that be withdrawn. There are other variances for the parking deck, include variances to not conceal automobiles, to allow parking structure to not have the appearance of a horizontal-story building, to not have flat floor plates, to reduce the minimum floor-to-ceiling height of fifteen feet, to not provide the required shade on top. As you know, we require forty percent shade on top, they would like to get a variance from that requirement. And then two waivers for the driveways, an existing driveway, but since the site has to come into compliance, existing features also need to come into compliance. They would like to keep the driveway width at twenty-six feet and to allow closer driveway spacing than what is permitted. This case was deferred in September, if you remember, it was listed on the agenda and advertised, however, the applicant submitted a request to defer two months, and so hence why we're back here tonight. The current site does include about a 20,000-square-foot one-story office building that will be demolished to make way for an approximately 200,000-square-foot five-story office building. The applicant has proposed and included fitness center and cafe which will be open to the public, but will not be separate businesses, they will be run by Pruitt Healthcare. There will be a new curb cut on Peachtree Road, there are currently two curb cuts on Malone, they're going to remove one of those. So once constructed and approved, there would be a curb cut on Malone and on Peachtree Road. And then the parking deck will include 550 parking spaces. So DRB did review this application before it came to you originally in September. That's the main reason it was deferred, so they could address comments received by the DRB. So we did receive a revised site plan on October fourteenth, which is in your packet. Some of the changes that were included in that is they did remove that variance that I mentioned earlier. They relocated the drop-off that was behind the building before to the side of Malone Drive. That came as a result of some concerns by the DRB, concerned about people dropping off on Peachtree Road and potentially impacting traffic. And they did add steps and terracing off the corner of Malone and Peachtree, they removed some of the retaining walls, increased the supplemental zone on Peachtree Road, they did cement revised building elevations in an attempt to address some of the concerns raised by DRB. And they did make some modifications to the parking garage. After this seminal, we did receive another plan based on, that included some changes. That was received on November sixth, the packet goes out November seventh, so that was well after the cutoff. We did include that as exhibit A in your packet, so you have that if you want to refer to it and if the applicant wants to refer to it. But just to note, accept it, have time to do a full review of that plan. Here's the aerial map showing the site. Here's the site plan as shown with the October fourteenth seminal. This is the revised site plan that came in in the November packet, and I wanted to show you this because that red area. If you're calling the October packet, there were three different options for that drop-off, and since that time, the applicant confirmed this, but it appears that they've selected this, which is a pull-off on Malone for drop-off in front of the fitness center. These are the elevations from the October fourteenth seminal. So again, they've slightly changed to the November seminal, which I'll show you here shortly. These are the November renderings. So in an attempt to address some of the comments, again, they added some brick and stone to the front of the facade. Those are the lighter areas you can see between some of the windows. Site photos, everybody's pretty familiar with this site, I'm sure, this is the senior connections building next to the senior housing. And then this shows the Peachtree Road frontage and the rear of the site. Staff does recommend approval of the DCI. And we have added condition two, that the tenant spaces be separate leasable spaces, and that the restaurant or cafe includes an outdoor seating area to provide more pedestrian amenities and sidewalk activity for development. Now, we do recommend approval of the majority of the variances and waivers, with the exception of denial of the publicly accessible open space. Pretty much all of the parking variances, we've recommended denial, and then we recommend a denial for the driveway width from twenty-six to twenty-four feet. And withdrawal, we do recommend a withdrawal of that variance. DRB reviewed the request, many of these items were addressed in our recent middle, the things I went over with the November seminal. They did also recommend denial of the variance for the backfill preventer in front of the building. And then also, they recommended denial of the publicly accessible open space variance. And then we have included a list of recommendations that include both staff and DRB recommendations for your use.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Fredrickson. At this time, there'll be ten minutes for anyone wishing to speak in favor.
Good evening, my name is Tyler Romo, I'm the chief development officer for Pruitt Health. My business address is 1626 Jurgens Court in Norcross, Georgia. That's our current location of our headquarters. We're excited about the opportunity to come to Shambly and bring our headquarters here. A little bit about our company, we are a regional healthcare company, we have about a hundred skilled nursing facilities throughout Georgia, South Carolina, North Carolina, Florida. Additionally, we provide hospice, home health care provisions, and also certain Medicaid waivers that we help patients that are at home getting care and services. We're excited about the opportunity and the prospects of coming to Shambly. It's an opportunity for us to bring our headquarters inside the perimeter of Atlanta, access to MARTA where we hope to recruit our employees from and utilize the MARTA line for our employers, employees. We currently have about 550 employees that will be coming into Shambly. We're excited about the opportunity to bring business to the local restaurants and business owners that our employees will be renting. Pruitt Health, while we're a healthcare business, we also engage our local communities. Such activities include Camp Cocoon where we solicit or seek out young adolescent adults who have lost an immediate family member or loved one, and then send them to a three-day reverent camp to help counsel and help them. We also engage our local schools and technical schools for those interested in becoming healthcare providers to do co-ops and work programs for them to introduce them to healthcare. Some details, questions, we're excited about the opportunity to come to Shambly, we hope for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Romo, there'll be an opportunity for questions later, he's putting aside, here's the item on the agenda.
Good evening, my name is Chris Scott, 3301 When You Reach Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia 30327. I'm with Greenstone Properties, we are the developer for Pruitt Health. Here tonight, just to walk you through a few things with regards to some of the renderings, and then the new site plan. You mentioned a lot of things, we're currently seeking a DCI approval for approximately 200,000-foot office building, as they said, headquarters is currently in Norcross and hoping to move to Shambly. I wanted to show really the progression of these renderings. This is the initial rendering that we shared with Shambly, the DRB, city council, and staff, and it wasn't received well. So we rolled up the sleeves and really spent a lot of time listening, and really wanted to find a building that Shambly was proud of, Pruitt Health was proud of, it was kind of a mixture, and really felt like it belonged to Shambly. We'll go to the next one. So this is the next rendition that we shared, and this was actually this seminal on October fourteenth. We brought in brick, worked on kind of exterior patio, and the feedback we received from a number of folks, it still just wasn't warm enough. And just spent some time on that, so if you go to the next one. And this is where we landed today, this is the November eleventh seminal. It shows the patio with the red umbrellas. It shows the building pushed back, which will show a site plan in a minute, which I think is the most important. It really broke up the massing along Peachtree Road, and really, I think created a great design. What it did allow us to do is grow our terrace and landscape terrace by about 3,000 feet. So it took it from, call it, 4,000 feet to almost 7,000 feet. To give you some perspective, Trackside, the Parkside Terrace project, their entire terrace area is about 3,500 feet. So we're double that size, and pushing the building back allowed us to gain that ground. If you go to the next one, please. This is a different version, different perspective of the site. We are screening it now, that's one thing DRB asked us to do, we're screening the entire deck. The other thing that this new site plan we submitted on November eleventh does for us is we now meet the fifty percent open public space requirements. We do not need that variance any longer. Next slide, please. This was the site plan we submitted on October fourteenth. You see the building pushed all the way to the street for the current coordinates. If you go to the next one, please. And you'll see now, there's a landscape terrace on Peachtree, and really, the corners, the terrace that will serve the restaurant with the patio with the umbrellas. So really, the public space that we're going to be allowed to offer Pruitt, their visitors, but also the community group significantly, and I think it's going to be a special place for the public to enjoy. It'll include benches, planters, trees, seasonal flowers, lush grasses, with decorative landscape and lighting accents. So that's something we're pretty excited about. I think I'm going to hand it over now. We did talk about, the one last thing I want to mention is the drop-off area on Malone. We did have three options, we talked to staff, I think we chose staff's, if they like it in general. I think we chose a person that we liked, I think staff liked us well for the drop-off along Malone. So, thank you.
Thank you, you have about four minutes remaining.
Good evening, my name is Jessica Hill, my business address is 3343 Peachtree Road, and I represent Pruitt Health. I'm just going to do a brief rundown of some of the staff recommended conditions and the variances and waivers that the staff is not recommending. Particularly on page ten, condition one with the site plan, we would ask that you, if you were to approve this DCI, that you approve the updated concept that we submitted on November sixth. That includes the updated elevation and the updated site plan, which moves the building back and improves the aesthetic based on various feedback that we have received. Second, the second condition also on page ten, the staff has recommended that the commercial spaces, the separately simple spaces, we're perfectly happy to design them as separately simple spaces, but just want to make sure that it is clear that Pruitt will likely be operating those spaces, they will be open to the public, and they will be designed to be leased, but they may not have a separate operator. Third, the DRB conditions, which are conditions four through ten, we think that we have addressed those in the updated rendering and site plans, we don't think those conditions are necessary at this point. And then with respect to the various denial recommendations on the variances and waivers. First, on the open space, we are going to withdraw the request to reduce the publicly accessible open space. So we agree with staff's denial of that. We have three variances related to the parking structure, specifically the screening, one being requiring a liner building, one being concealing the vehicles, and the third being that the parking structure looked like a horizontal-story building. We have concealed the parking with screening, it's not a hundred percent opaque, there is some mesh there, but we believe that it will hide the cars if not a hundred percent conceal them. And there is a liner building along the sidewalk level to provide active use space for anybody that is walking by as a pedestrian. And we believe that the visual aesthetic of the parking structure, it will have art on the structure, it will have vertical elements, it will have horizontal elements. We think that it is additive to the building. With respect to the forty percent covered parking on the very top level of the parking deck, we would ask that the council consider granting that variance. We are willing to paint the top level of the deck with a reflective coating, if that's helpful, but would request that variance. And then the last one that is recommended for denial is the driveway width at the rear. It's twenty-four feet is allowed, we've asked for twenty-six. One thing just to be brought to your attention, there is an existing easement with the adjacent property for that drive that very specifically calls out, it's a twenty-five-foot drive and the easement that was granted in 2006. And so we would like to keep the drive as is for that purpose. With that, we thank you for your consideration, thank you.
Thank you, there's about a minute and a half remaining, if anyone else would like to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Brian Quetta, 5200 Peachtree Road. I'm kind of reacting to the news of the variances being withdrawn, or a lot of them. So all I'm going to say is I, I want to say two things. I recommend that the variance, the staff recommended being denied, be denied. I think that's always a good idea to stick to the professionals advice. And my other thing I want to say is, if this project is approved going forward, that every effort is made to keep sidewalks open in this very critical area for pedestrians, because it's across the street from MARTA Station. Specifically, if they cannot keep open the sidewalk on their property or adjoining their property, then this project does not need to begin work until the streetscape protecting that's taking place now is finished. In other words, at no time should a both sides, both sidewalks on both sides of the streets be closed. That's just, that's not right. And if they have to close their sidewalk, I hope they make a way for pedestrians to pass by the site. And that's all I'm going to say, thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, Bob Fredrickson, I'm a business owner at 3400 Malone. I have no problem with the renderings, my concern is with the traffic. As I've looked at the traffic study, it talks about over a hundred and eighty vehicles leaving the property at the most intensive times during the day. We have done a lot in the area to work making it pedestrian-friendly with the special sidewalks along Peachtree Road, and I'm particularly concerned with traffic going up the side streets of Malone Drive as we have a rail trail that we'll be crossing with an unknown number of pedestrians, baby carriages, bicycles, and dogs in the future. And as far as denying the variance, Councilman Christman explained to me the judicial review process. There is a court case, Roswell versus the Christian Fellowship School, where the court upheld a denial due to traffic concerns. And if you want documentation of traffic concerns from the citizens, I volunteer to come up with a hundred residents of Malone Drive who will sign a petition about traffic concerns for this project, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, there's about seven and a half minutes remaining.
Kim Fredrickson, I'm a business owner at 3400 Malone Drive, fellow gorgeous boutique and cafe. I have no problem with the building. I just am basically a witness to ATIVA and SLX being built down at the Peachtree Industrial Boulevard side. And Malone is kind of a wild, wild west of speeding cars, no crosswalks, construction workers parking in a variety of places. So my real concern is, because I do appreciate the Pruitt gentleman and lady talking about how they want to be part of the community, and then I noticed that they said, one of the first gentlemen who spoke, he said that Pruitt wants to work to help bring businesses, restaurants, and other businesses in Shambly more business. So I think that's a great idea, and I hope that could happen. But my concern is that over the last two years with the ATIVA and SLX projects, I've lost business. I have customers who tell me that they feel like it's a war zone, that they're taking their life in their hands when they go either down Peachtree Road or Peachtree Boulevard. I had a woman yesterday who told me, she called before she came because she wanted to find out the parking situation was, and she said that she felt like down at the Peachtree Industrial side, they were trying, they, we're trying, whoever they are, we're trying to hide them alone drive sign. And this is a customer who spends thousands of dollars with me a year, so I'd kind of like to keep her. And then I had a lady this morning come, who's a long-time Shambly resident, and she did park in the back in the parking lot, which we do have a few spaces in, but her concern was the same. She was very concerned, she has a, she's a senior citizen, she has a bad leg, and it was a longer walk for her. So I think that building is an interesting possibility. And certainly, 550 cars would bring 550 potential customers, and that's great. But in the meantime, we've built over the last five years a great community in Shambly and beyond of customers, and it's our community, we live here, and we're business owners and taxpayers and employers. And I would like to, I would like to see and hear how Pruitt is going to facilitate a smoother construction experience to, when they, to let this project to fruition, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. There's a little over five minutes remaining, if anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I only had a question, is it appropriate to ask it now, or?
This is your opportunity to speak to us, we can't respond to questions.
Well, okay.
Or then if you're presiding for the council, not the applicant, if you could face us and speak to us, please.
Okay, I saw an inconsistency between what was reported to me about the meeting last night that you held, and that is regard to the cafe. In the council's recommendation, as I understand it, was a public access cafe, but last night, as I understand it, they were kind of horrified and said because of HEPA regulations that they, anybody getting into that cafe would have to go through their lobby process to get processed into the building. And I wanted to make sure that that was what the recommendation had in mind, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. About four and a half minutes remaining.
Janette Anderson, I live at 5200 Peachtree Road. My comments are related to traffic, and there is a statement in one of your documents that the city engineer shall verify that the level of service needs in line with the city plans for this quarter. And I'm just calling that to attention. What I looked at in the traffic report, from the best I can understand it, is certainly the worst. There's going to be an increase in the traffic, particularly at Shambly Tucker and Peachtree Road. And so I would like to know and hope you all would consider looking at that as a potential concern, whether that's going to stay in line with the growth that this area is going to have. And my other concern is just making sure that, since the study was done in the summer for traffic, that, and this was pre-three-way stop signs being set up at multiple places along that route, that that was considered in the traffic impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Janette. There's about three and a half minutes remaining. You have about a minute and a half remaining for rebuttal, would you like to use that time? Yes.
Thank you, Chris Scott, again, Greenstone Properties.
Thank you, Chris Scotty in Greenstone Properties. So from a construction perspective, I know there's concern. I know there's a lot of concern. A lot of concern comes from what's going on at it at Malone, the two apartment complexes. I do think in talking to the cities, new ordinances and regulations are going to come out, which is really kind of best in practices, which we would come and do anyway. But we plan to work with Shambly, Shambly staff, et cetera, on sidewalks and use best in practices. Construction parking, we'll have a plan. We commit to have a plan to staff to review before we start construction. And gain approval for that plan. I want to correct, I know what you're talking about in terms of the HIPAA. And that cafe will be open to the public. They can access it from the street. They don't have to check in badges, anything like that. That was really, if somebody wanted to come in off the street.
Please direct your comments to the council.
Sorry. If you come in off the street, to use the restroom, and you're not eating at the cafe, from a HIPAA perspective, we just can't be a public restroom. But if you're eating at the cafe and use the restroom facilities, that's great. Traffic, we're concerned with traffic ourselves. We're talking about density and use. Marta, Marta Station's important to us. That's the reason Pruitt is interested in this. Plan is to give vouchers to employees to use Marta. We feel like looking at the traffic study for the Pruitt employees will be okay.
Thank you. And we are out of time. The next item on the agenda is PZ twenty nineteen. In accordance with the rules of order, there is rebuttal from the proponents after the proponents speak. Those that aren't familiar, copy is on the back table. The next item on the agenda is PZ twenty nineteen, five forty-three, thirty-seven eleven, Claremont Road, parking variance. Mr. Dixon?
Yes, this is a request for a reduction in parking for a proposed restaurant at thirty-seven eleven Claremont Road. Property's own NC two, NC two neighborhood commercial. It's about a quarter acre lot, lot. The variance is from section two fifty-two, which is the parking regulations. The applicant's proposing to renovate an existing two thousand square foot commercial building into a restaurant. This redevelopment, as currently proposed by the applicant, does not exceed the thirty percent threshold. So they are not required to bring any of the existing facilities into compliance with the UDO at this time. The applicant's proposing to pay, to re-strike existing paved areas for parking for the restaurant. They are proposing to add some additional landscaping on the site, and there will be a small patio in the front to access the building. I did want to let you know there was some code enforcement activity on this property earlier this year. There was a citation issued for unpermitted construction and a notice of violation for rubbish and debris. The property owner did bring the site into compliance for both of those issues. Here's the aerial map. Again, right along Claremont Road, just north of Bragg. Here's the site plan showing how they'll be parking in both the front and back of the building. And then the applicant did submit a floor plan showing how the interior build-out may happen. And then elevations of the building are included in your packet. Here's some existing site photos. Again, that's along Claremont Road. Currently, it's an existing insurance, and there's another, I believe, an accountant office in there. Staff does recommend approval of parking variance. Some conditions include removing the abandoned pole and non-compliant pole-mounted light fixture on the property, and then requiring any fencing on-site because it is dis-repaired to be brought into compliance with the UDO. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. At this time, I'll be ten minutes for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the project.
My name is Sammy Geraci. I am the owner of that lot. I think as far as the parking concerned, there's seventeen spots is plenty for me as far as for a restaurant. I've been, since that issue came about, I've been watching restaurants and seeing how many cars they have. I mean, most of them, three, four cars, five cars. So if I have fifteen, I think I'm doing well. I'd be doing great if I had fifteen cars every day. And I'm open four days a week right now. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Saturday and Sunday, we're doing brunch also, so. As far as the, also, parking, we have the new storage place right down the street from my place. They have five more spots for parking, public parking. And three hundred feet down the road, there's the shopping center where Mint Restaurant is, or next to the storage building. It's like three hundred feet away from my place. Lots of parking. Just in case, you know, there's an event, I had an event or something special, then we have extra parking in that area. As far as the rubbish and the cleaning up, we already started cleaning up. And you can see it right now. It's pretty clean. And, but we were doing, selling cars, and it was like a junkyard in the back. It's all cleaned up and ready for a restaurant. As far as the, my experience in restaurants, I have extensive restaurant experience. Since nineteen seventy-nine, I had one restaurant in Virginia Highland area. Then another one, nineteen eighty-one, at Colony Square in Midtown. Nineteen ninety-one, also, I had one in the Marriott Marquis downtown. And the last one, I had the, right across from the Fox Theatre downtown. For, so I have experienced about twenty, over twenty-two years in restaurants. And it's Mediterranean restaurant, the idea, the concept of the restaurant. As far as landscaping, I've done also landscaping, and I'm planning to make it look good. I think it's going to be a great addition to the city of Shambly. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? There's seven minutes remaining. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Next item on the agenda is PZ twenty nineteen, five forty-five, fifty-one, twenty-six, Peachtree Boulevard variances. That is for Solace Park View.
Yes, Mayor, for the council. This is a request for Solace Park View, phase two. That is currently under construction. They're requesting two temporary signs that do not meet the zoning ordinance. They would like to post two two hundred and twenty-five square foot banners on the building for a period of six months. There are three sections in the signed ordinance that do not allow this. The first is that banners are allowed for three fourteen, fourteen-day periods per calendar year. They would like to keep it for six months. They're also asking for two, two hundred and twenty-five square foot banners. They're allowed thirty-two square feet. And then they're also allowed one per lot, and they would like two per lot. Here's the aerial map. Everybody's familiar, next to Keswick Park here, near the intersection of Claremont and Peachtree Boulevard. Here's the building in construction, just to show you where it would be located. There's a, there's a corner of the building, the red and the green would be where those banners are located. And you can see that same area here on the site plan rendering oriented towards the intersection of Claremont and Peachtree Boulevard. And then where they would be located on the top of the buildings. And then finally, here is an example of what the signs will look like. Here's just some photos showing you the, again, the location and the building in progress of being constructed. Staff does recommend denial of the request. However, if council wishes to approve it, we have added some recommended staff conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope everybody's doing well tonight. I know we've got a busy one, so I'll keep this short.
Do you can please state your name and address, so it's easy to click for the record?
My name is Mike Anna. Business address is three five six two five Piedmont Road, Building Two, Suite seven thirty-five. I'm here representing Pruitt Pathos Multi Family Partners in our request for variance to display those temporary banners. As Matt mentioned, we are the developers of Park View right next door. We've been developing here since two thousand and fifteen, the most prolific developer in Shambly since that time. We love working here. So why are we asking for this variance? And the answer is very simple, to help inform the public that we have residential and retail space available to be set at this time. If you've driven by the project recently, you may have noticed that our streetscape looks, excuse me, looks complete. The sidewalk is open. That was a conscious decision on our part as good neighbors here in the city to remove our construction fencing, even though we are very much under construction at this time, making our little piece of Shambly as attractive as possible. Unfortunately, that also means that we've lost our best opportunity to advertise using fence wrap. So we are asking for your help to get the word out that we have that space available. We love working here, and we feel that that option of hanging banners on the side of our building is the most attractive option possible in lieu of using construction fencing. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Louis Newmark. I live at thirty-four hundred Malone Drive, up at three twenty, Shambly. I'm in favor of this because there's so much other signage that's being allowed by all the other developers in the city. If some of it is rather unsightly, it gets torn down, it gets ripped up. This banner looks like it's going to be something that would be somewhat attractive and help these folks out. So I don't think it's fair to have other people fly their banners and not even have to get a permit for it. And these guys are trying to do the right thing, so please approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Newmark. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? PZ twenty nineteen, five forty-six, fifty-two ninety-five, New Peachtree Road, Iglesia de Dios Pentecostal, DCI.
Yes, this is a DCI request and eight variances and three waivers at fifty-two ninety-five New Peachtree Road. The site's own village commercial and is a three-acre site. In this case, the applicant's requesting the ten thousand square foot addition on an existing religious institution. The eight variances include variances to not install this required streetscape on Watkins Avenue, to allow metal panels as more than just architectural accents, to not make boat-street-facing façades, the primary facade architecturally, to vary from the sustainability measurement requirements, to not provide the required loading space. There is an existing pole sign on the property that advertises both this site and the college next door. They would like to request a variance to allow that sign to remain. There's a variance request to allow the existing parking that is currently located on the corner of Watkins and New Peachtree to remain between the building and the street. And then a variance to not install wheel bumpers, which are required in the parking lot. The three waivers, two of those are related to the parking lot landscaping, again, it's the existing parking lot. And then the third waiver is to not provide a pedestrian walkway from the building to the current parking. The applicant is proposing an addition, which they're calling the Fellowship Hall, onto the existing facility. That new building will face New Peachtree Road. And in total, the building, once completed, if approved, would be about twenty-six thousand square feet. This site does exceed the seventy percent redevelopment threshold, so they are required to bring the entire site into compliance with the UDO or request variances and waivers. The building architecture, they're proposing some architectural metals with some opaque spandrel glass. DRB did have some concerns about this. You'll see here in the next few slides. Just not being clear on what exactly the materials would be. Again, the applicant is proposing or requesting a variance to not install the streetscape on Watkins. They are proposing to install the streetscape on New Peachtree Road. In addition, I mentioned the pole sign being shared between the college and the church. The parking lot is also a shared parking lot. Here's the aerial map. You can see that shared parking lot in between the college and the church. Here's the site plan. So that blue area is the ten thousand square foot addition onto the existing church. The green shows where they are proposing to meet the streetscape requirements on New Peachtree Road. And that red area is where they're asking for the variance along Watkins. The applicant did submit some renderings of what the new construction would look like. They've also submitted some materials examples. This one, again, was a question by the DRB to try to get clarification on, are these exact materials? Are they similar materials? So hopefully the applicant can provide some more details on that. Here's photos showing, again, the existing sign, the grass area between the religious institution and the cemetery. And then the, showing Watkins Avenue and the parking. Staff does recommend approval of the DCI with some conditions related to bringing the dumpster into compliance with the UDO. We are recommending that streetscape be installed on Watkins Avenue. It's a pretty highly, there's a lot of pedestrians in the area with the college and the Marjorie Station. And then adding that pedestrian walkway, again, that walkway, the parking lot entrance, that's the only entrance to the parking lot from New Peachtree, so there's a good deal of traffic using that entrance. And then that the pole sign can remain, but it can be expanded in any way to become more non-conforming. We do recommend approval. Most of the variances and waivers, with the exception of the streetscape, the sustainability measures and that pedestrian walkway that I mentioned previously. DRB did review the request, agreed with staff about the Watkins Avenue streetscape and the pedestrian walkway. And then most of their comments were comments, asking the applicant to provide more information on the metal panels. And then one additional condition recommendation to add some elements in the addition that would allow some light to enter the interior of the building. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. As far as anyone wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Steve Varner, and I'm with AAA Solutions. I'm a friend of the church. And my address is fifty-one oh five Deer Trail in Alpharetta. And I just wanted to speak and say the church is doing well, has about five hundred members, very active. Means a lot to a lot of families. And they've always lacked a place to do celebrations like church anniversary, Mother's Day, Christmas dinner, that sort of thing. And the additional ten thousand square feet will meet that need for them. And I hope y'all will be able to approve it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I'm Sandy Epstein, SCA Studios, sixty-two eighty-five Barfield Road in Sandy Springs. Generally, we believe that we were accepted, and most of the items that we asked for were accepted, except for a couple. And one was the streetscape along Watkins. What we don't have a serious objection, except we were told by the engineer that there's not enough room along Watkins to actually install that streetscape. So from that standpoint, I don't know exactly how that would be addressed. But I'm sure that it can be discussed and if there's some way to come. If there's a right-way line there, there's no room for a streetscape, I guess, the planning department has to have to tell us how that would be done. The other item was the crosswalk that was discussed. Again, there's no issue with installing painted crosswalks. But as it goes now, it's a shared parking lot with the technical college. People park anywhere. So exactly how you control where people cross, I don't really know, but I don't think it's a problem installing the crosswalks. As far as the comments from the DRB, they were asking about exactly how we, or what the building would look like. These are our renderings. These are not, these are not extensive renderings. We're in a schematic preliminary design at this point. I mean, the only thing they, they were asking what kind of panels. These are architectural panels. This is a floor bottom coated panel, so it's a, it's a smooth-faced panel that would be on the building. And the stripes that you see, the diagonal stripes, were a part of the design. Part of that was intended to mimic the stained glass that's on the, on the backside of the church. You can't see it here, but we were just trying to create that. And that would be created with additional pieces of metal as part of the system that goes with the the petrifiedated architectural aluminum panels. Beyond that, we invert the DCI because it puts the building much closer to the street. We are able to save a very large specimen tree that's in the back that was, the church was brided in the process of taking down. But we pulled the building forward, we saved it. There was a comment about glass. The church actually requested not to have glass or vision into the building. But I think under the rules, churches and parishes are not required to have glass. However, we do have glass. We are creating a patio element at the back of the space. It's not viewable from the street, but they would have glass, so their function would be able to be shared between the inside and the outside of the building. Beyond that, I think that what we were processing for Marta. So parking is not required, but the parking already exists. It's shared. There's plenty of parking. There's no additional parking that's being added as part of this project. So I think that as far, I think we're making it, making it better, making it nicer. Beyond that, there was one other concern that brought up that there's a joint cemetery. And it's actually separated by Shambly fence. We understood that the city doesn't actually know who owns the cemetery, and they don't know who. know who owns the fence. They were concerned about during construction, how that would be treated between the building and the cemetery. What we did tell them is that, that the, under the, the DCI, we were allowed to actually have a zero lot line with the cemetery applied, but we deliberately pulled it off of that, so there wouldn't be any issue whatsoever during the construction phase.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. And there's about six minutes remaining. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
I'm Albert Schmidt. I'm the owner of the college and owner of all adjacent property in that area. The history of this is in two thousand when we sold off the church to Aglesia. And as a part of that, a perpetual cross easement was done on the parking, so the parking is shared, it's not restricted, and that's because students and parishers will take the closest place they can find to park, and so that way nobody has to be out patrolling it. I would be opposed to requiring speed bumpers to be put in that parking lot because it will disrupt the flow of it as it's already laid out. There's parking on the side that goes in a rectangle, plus there's parking in the middle. There's never been any accidents, there's not any public access to that lot, so I'm not sure that's a necessary requirement to go in and disrupt that. Parking lots, this building was originally, church was built nineteen seventy-three, our building behind it was built nineteen fifty-one, so that's how far it goes back. The sign that's there, once the college moved to the other building and erected the monument sign, and thank you for all the help getting that done, you know, we have no problem with the sign staying there. We would give it to the church and let them redesign it, or it only represented the church because the college no longer considers that sign an important part of what we're doing. I would agree with Mr. Epstein that the space is very limited on the corner of Watkins there, and I'm not sure there's enough space remaining to create a huge streetscape, whatever. There's very little traffic that goes through Watkins north to south. There's a lot of student traffic that goes between the buildings. I would be very much in favor of laying a crosswalk there at Watkins, just so it'd make people much more aware that there's student traffic back and forth. But in generally, you know, we would be in favor of the things that they want to do with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Richard Eason, sixty-nine ten Magennis Ferry, Alpharetta, Georgia. To solve the problem, who owns the cemetery is the Johns Creek Baptist Church, that moved from that location some twenty-six years ago, but we did retain the cemetery. This addition is right next to the cemetery. The shambly fence that was mentioned is there, it's in need of repair. This area where the building is to be built has been used as a soccer field, which has been a problem for us maintaining any part of that cemetery around there because of a lot of trash, things thrown over there, and the damage has been done to it. We are in favor of this building being there. We would like to see some assistance with a buffer there between the building and the cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Gus, you coming up to the microphone, or are you going up the bathroom? Okay, moving on. PZ twenty-nineteen five forty-eight forty-seven eighty-three Peachtree Road, variances and waivers.
Yes, this is a request for five variances and two waivers to renovate an existing commercial space into office space at forty-seven eighty-three Peachtree Road. This property's own village commercial and is about a tenth of an acre. This is an existing antique store, and the applicant proposes to renovate the building to be office. The variances include variances from required parking. They're asking to reduce the parking from ninety-five to forty-six. I just wanted to clarify in the memo that it said ninety-five to forty-nine. That was just a flop of the numbers. The application was correct, the legal act was correct, correct. But the actual request is from ninety-five to forty-six spaces, which is a reduction of forty-nine spaces. They're asking for variances from the streetscape, for sidewalk clear zone, and landscape zone, asking to increase the impervious surface from seventy-eight to eighty-eight percent. The maximum is eighty. And then to not, to provide some of the streetscape elements, like trees and lights on the out, on the outside of the sidewalk as opposed to the inside between the travel lane and the sidewalk. In addition, there are some parking lot landscaping variances requested, and then a reduction, reduction in the drive aisle width from twenty-two feet to a little over fifteen feet. This is a current antique store, about twenty-three thousand six hundred square feet, built around nineteen seventy-six. There is some existing parking in the front and the rear that is partially in the G dot right-of-way. I'll show you that in just a second. The applicant did not provide any future elevations at the request of staff. They're not required for a variance unless they're asking for some variances from the facade, however, we do typically recommend them. But the applicant will have to meet with the renovation and any facade or exterior requirements without variances or waivers. They are increasing the existing parking up to forty-six spaces, removing a lot of the existing outdoor storage on the site, re-striping and adding some paving. This property does exceed the thirty percent, so they are required to install the streetscape. They're a little less than sixty percent for the redevelopment assessment. Here's the aerial, next to the self-storage building and the MARTA tracks, next to Peachtree Boulevard. Here's the existing site plan and the proposed site plan. This is the area where they're adding a lot of the additional paving and re-striping to add additional parking. Some site photos showing the building and then the, the front edge along Peachtree Boulevard, actually Peachtree Road here. Staff does recommend approval in part and denial in part with conditions. We are asking, there is part of the drive aisle that will still remain in the G dot right-of-way, so we'll have to get approval from G dot for that. We've added some conditions. Number four, I did have, we did have some concerns about the usability of some of the parking spaces based on the drive aisle width and some of the orientation, so I have recommended a condition for your consideration that allows some flexibility for staff to maybe provide a combination of one-way, two-way driveways with a variation of parallel and angled parking. And then we do have a condition that there's an existing pole sign on the site that that be removed prior to CO. Recommend approval of three, one variance and two waivers, denial of the streetscape variances, denial of the impervious surface variance. We feel there's alternative means such as pervious paving that they can use to meet their requirement. And then, again, the other three are related to the streetscape.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Yes, thanks. My name is Carl Westmore. My address, thirty-three forty-three Peachtree Road, representing Greenleaf Partners, who are current, have a current business in the city of Shambly and are proposing to relocate their office into this building once they purchase it. I think we're fine with the, with the staff recommendation as they've been clarified. They're somewhat different from that which came out in writing last week. This is essentially renovating the existing building. The site constraints obviously lead to all the variances that we've requested is between the old brick and the storage facility. The MARTA line, as you may know, is very close to the building in the back. We, all the outdoor storage on the south side of the building, the right side, as you look from Peachtree, will be cleared out, and that's where, as you see, the additional parking will go. The reduction of parking, as you heard, there are twelve spaces there now in front of the building. The others will be added on the side. We've worked out with staff, and I think this is reflected in the, in the conditions that you saw, that will increase the amount of, rather than increase the amount of pervious service, we'll just use pervious favors on the side for the new parking, and that will solve that problem because it will keep it below the eighty percent threshold. We've asked to waive the requirement for landscape islands in the new parking area. Obviously, if we did that, that would simply exacerbate the, the reduction that we're asking for, and staff has recommended approval of that. You notice that they recommended denial of the production of the aisle width, the parking, and what they proposed instead is that we work with them for a new parking configuration on that side, and if that configuration causes the parking number to drop below forty-six, then that would automatically be approved as well. We hope and want the, will work with staff on that. So the only other two that they recommended denial of had to do with working around the utility build and the fire hydrant out front. We, we talked with staff, we think we can try to accommodate that if necessary by moving the sidewalk back farther away from the, from Peachtree. So with that, again, I think all of this is justified, about the difficulty of working in an existing building. If you've seen pictures of it, I think it would be hard to argue that this is not an aesthetic improvement for the, for the site. It converts it into an office building, and we think that the parking could be adequate to, to serve that with the conditions that staff had recommended. So we'll, representatives of Greenleaf are here if you have questions, and we'll reserve any time if necessary.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Larry Pierce, fifty-five forty-six Peachtree Road is our office. We own the barbecue restaurant next to the, to the antique warehouse, and we're concerned because they use our pumping station, and right now they are allotted thirty gallons per day. So we are, our plan is to build a sewer system, a private sewer system, that will connect round auto up the street and the storage facility and the antique warehouse. We are working to get that completed, but have not done so yet. So our, our concern is that we are able to continue working on that easement agreement that we had with, we've been working on with Bruce Cosmato, so that they'll have what they need.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? You have about seven and a half minutes for rebuttal.
I'll leave at least seven of them. That sounds like a private issue, Mr. Easeman. It's got nothing to do with the, with the variances, and it can be worked out between parties, so I, I don't think that changes anything that we've asked for tonight.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is TA twenty-nineteen zero zero five, twenty nineteen annual UDO amendment. Before I hand it over to you, I'll remind the folks here that these items will all appear again later this evening on the agenda, at which point there may be more discussion.
All right, thank you. This is the annual twenty nineteen UDO amendment. No major policy changes here. I did want to go over and just cover a few things. Most of these are to solidify things that have already been done, are being done, that there may be some confusion, or things that have come up by, from you all throughout the year or as we implement the UDO issues that we see. One thing from Title One is to vest DCIs. So currently, you're only vested if you have an LDP or flat, but since DCIs have a specific approval period, they're approved, they expire in two years, we feel that it would be appropriate to also say that you're vested in the ordinance with the DCI approval. The chapter two twenty, updating the PUD standards just to reflect some of the town center PUD standards that were adopted, adding that barbed wire and razor wire fencing are not permitted in the rail trail overlay. Chapter two thirty, the max impervious surface for I was sixty percent, where IT was eighty percent, so we matched those up to eighty percent because we didn't really understand why they were different, and would be glad to hear if y'all recall if there was a reason for that. Prohibiting electric fences in all districts was something else we added, something that's come up more recently. Also in chapter two thirty, to allow fencing on top of retaining walls that are there for safety purposes, so we don't build walls where people can fall off the edge. That was a council-generated request. Another one was to, another thing that's come up recently is when, to make sure that when people are building sidewalks, they don't just end in drop-offs, that they're graded down to the grade of the adjacent property so that other people are able to tie in. It's another response to some development activities. Two forty, the use table, we just, event centers were listed as supplemental use, but then there were no supplemental uses listed, so we added that as permitted. Freestanding mailboxes are something that's come up recently, so we've added those as accessory uses as a starting point, just to make sure there's some guidance in there in terms of making sure they're not going to cause any issues with crashes or visibility, and maybe potentially looking at limiting the size and scale of those. Adding farmer's markets as a temporary use allowed in all district wasn't there before. We did have a, a part of the sustainability efforts to, if you're keeping bees, your grass can be twenty-four inches in height, which is recommended for beekeeping. Chapter two fifty, another issue that came up recently was the number of parked cars. So there was a draft ordinance actually by the city attorney to limit the number of cars in unoccupied properties that are in R one and R two, and then to limit to two cars and then for occupied properties to, to four, unless you can prove you have more than four people with driver's licenses in the home. So that's a recommendation. Two seventy, we have some issues with redevelopment assessments where people come in with very low builder's cost estimates, and there's really no criteria in which we review that, so we want to tie that to ICC valuations to make it more consistent across the board, understanding that they always have the right to come and ask for variances if there's hardship. Another issue that's come up, two eighty, people get suspicious when you post cameras around the neighborhood, so that happens a lot with traffic studies where you have cameras to count cars. So we've added, at the request of Public Works, that when we require traffic studies, that they post some signage, just to say, small signage, traffic study in progress, so people understand what's happening in the community. No major updates in Title Three, that's development regulations, some legal updates to the sediment, sorry, erosion, sedimentation, and pollution control ordinance, and then a minor update to Article eighteen, which is the property maintenance code. I did hear from council on a few things, wanted to just list those out and ensure that everyone wants to move forward with some of these changes. One thing with, back to the mailboxes, was adding some typical sizes and maybe requiring permits once you get past a certain size, so that's something to look at between now and Tuesday if that's okay with council. Adding, clarifying it for the parking restrictions on single-family, that that's only for cars outside if it's enclosed in a legal accessory structure, garage. First of all, we can't really count those, and the second of all, if you can't see them, is it a problem? That's something that came up. Temporary real estate signage recently was reduced to four feet. One council member suggested changing that back to six feet, so just want to see if there's consensus on that. And then some of the stormwater ordinance changes, and I still need to follow up with the city attorney. I believe those are all changes that are part of the change to the state model ordinance, but I'll clarify that between now and Tuesday. And I believe that captures everything I've heard to this date.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Just to point out clarity, if I have a yellow jacket mask on my yard, am I a beekeeper?
Yeah.
A little better to find that. I mean, that's actually worn or something like that. At this point, there'll be ten minutes for anyone wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Motion makes a public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I would like to ask for clarification from council if that would just be the public hearing for zoning matters and not to include non-zoning matters. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I'll lose the favor. Okay, that passes unanimously. The public hearing for zoning matters is now closed, but we'll open the public hearing for non-zoning matters. The rules of order for public hearings for non-zoning matters. The mayor is the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to its individual members. Anyone wishing to speak shall come to the microphone, give their name and address to the city clerk, limit remarks to three minutes unless further time is granted by the council, and not speak a second time until everyone wishing to speak has spoken once. No one can speak more than twice. Please do not speak unless you have a microphone and have been recognized. Again, I'll remind everyone that items from the public hearing for zoning matters as well as for non-zoning matters will appear again on the agenda later this evening. First item on the agenda for public hearing, non-zoning matters, is the comprehensive plan update public hearing.
Yes, Mayor, pro-attend and counsel. As you know, we've been going through a major update to the conference plan, which has all participated in a lot of the public involvement opportunities.
which has all participated in a lot of the public involvement opportunities. We've invited TSW, who was our lead consultant, Mr. Adam Williamson's here, as part of the required process by the state or to have a public hearing at this point in front of mayor and council. So we've advertised, we've placed notice about the public hearing. Adam's going to go over and present, give a brief presentation about the plan. And then we would like to allow the public to come up and speak if they would like. Right now, this is not, we're not asking to move this to the first three or take action on this. Once we go through this public hearing process, get feedback from DCA, we'll resubmit in December for final consideration. So with that, I'll hand it over to Adam. Adam, here's your clip here.
Adam Williamson with, I'm TSW. Our address is fourteen forty-seven Peachtree Street. I'm out of Georgia. I'm also having Eric Bosman with me, Kim Lee Horn. So this is the comprehensive plan. We spoke with most of you guys on one-on-one, we got a lot of great feedback from you. And we're going to go through more of an executive summary to keep this short. This is over three hundred page document, so there's a lot of information in there. And this is our team that worked on it. TSW, Kim Lee Horn, the legal advisory, Urban Three and South Base. And so what is a comprehensive plan? You guys know it well. It's a, you know, thinking out the next twenty or thirty years. And what we really did was take all these planning studies you guys have been working on and put it in this document where you can find all the projects and policies in one place. As you can see by this meeting, development is booming and shambling and that's a great thing. But this has helped guiding the development in the future. Determine what the current plans are working and what we can improve on. We made specific recommendations on land use, future development, and guidelines for indoor development, for economic development. Made recommendations for increasing walkability and viability and developed a framework for increased sustainability. So we started on this process in March and here we are in November. And we're, we're going to be hoping to come back to you guys in December for adoption. Part of the public outreach, we had a thirty-five member of our committee where we had four meetings. We took two tours. We interviewed twenty-two stakeholders. We had an online survey. We had four public meetings, community education sessions, and then two pop-up events. So we did a lot of public outreach in a short period of time and these are some of the images. As you can see, some of the outreach at Plaza Fiesta, some of the education sessions and some of the workshops. I mentioned the, the public outreach on the, we had a survey and was on shamly.com and a website. They advertised our meetings and we kept all the information on that website. The survey, we had up from April to June, we had a hundred and forty-eight responses, wish we had more, but they were quality responses. And there was a Spanish version. And one of the things that we, we saw, and you can see the picture here, walkable was really what we heard the most about shambling. Walkable, diverse, inclusive, vibrant, sustainable. So what we did was we created a vision statement or user vision statement you guys created recently and the goals. And they created policies and then from those policies, we created specific projects. This is the vision statement. The city of Shamley inspires to be healthy, vibrant, affordable, and safe environment where residents live, work, play, and grow in a diverse community. The values as neighbors and historic qualities of the city, you're familiar with that. And then these are the five goals. I won't read all these, but really the one that I think sticks out to me is bill number four. We heard a lot, develop and maintain strong multimodal connections. And that was a big one we heard over and over. Also, you have a lot of small businesses in Shambling and supportive, thriving business environment. We heard that also. Some of the policies, we created fifty-nine general policies that covers land use, transportation, economic development, housing, and sustainability. We also revamped your character areas. I believe you had twenty character areas. Now we've taken those down to thirteen. Really it's going to be easier for the, the community to understand, easier for anybody that looks at the character areas to understand. We also did six small area plans. Sometimes I joke with Matthew about that, it's kind of large area plans. But we, we did plan these six areas you see in the, in the map here. And we really looked at land use and development and the transportation recommendations that, that are in these areas, which we think will have a lot of future development that are coming your way. And these smaller plans, active standalone plans that have their own visioning goals within the comprehensive plan. This is an example of the small area plan. And really what we did was we created these plans looking at future development. There's a lot of mixed-use development, commercial, housing. And then we worked with Kim Lee Horn to create transportation that's appropriate for the future of these areas. I'd like to turn over Eric to talk about that.
Thanks. As Adam mentioned, my name is Eric Bosman with Kim Lee Horn. And also, as Adam mentioned, there was a keen focus on multimodal transportation within the plan. And while the city has invested a great deal of time and effort in the multimodal transportation plan that was done citywide last year, that looked at mobility and connectivity across the city. What we did as part of the comprehensive plan process was build upon those strategies and augment them with additional connectivity and multimodal strategies within each of the six sub-area plans. So everything that was in the multimodal transportation plan that was approved by council is also in the comprehensive plan, that there are additional projects, including roadway connections, intersection improvements, and new trail connections that build off of that larger master plan within each of these six small areas. So the transportation component of the comprehensive plan, again, includes everything that is in the multimodal transportation plan, but added some information from new studies that are being, that are being conducted in coordination with the managed lane process that GDOT is looking at across two eighty-five and the potential to run transit within those managed lanes, as well as those additional small area recommendations for additional bicycle, pedestrian, and roadway connections within each of those small areas. And then those are defined within the comprehensive plan, both in short-term projects and long-term projects, which, once the plan is adopted, should guide you in terms of future capital improvements programs and budgeting exercises.
We also had the housing and economic development. And we used the strategic economic development plan that you guys completed last year or two and really built, really built off of that. Some of the key projects within that is the public art program, coordinating with your new CID and citywide broadband service and feasibility study. And the housing part of it, affordable housing was a key component that came up through the process. We, we talked about that a lot during the meetings. And so that is one of the key projects too, is look at a housing inventory study and affordable housing study. Priority projects are defined as those that can be funded within next year. And we created a list with staff, a longer list than these three that you see here. And went out for the draft, planned open house and actually had people vote on it. And these are the three that came to the top. Beuthard Highway, Shambling's Upper Road Small Area Plan, the housing inventory study, and the rail trail expansion. So these are the three priority projects in the plan. So overall, there are two hundred and eight projects, totaling one hundred and twenty-one million over five years. So seventy-five percent are transportation project costs. So the funding sources include the general funds, state and federal funds, grants, CID, special tax revenues, and private funds from developers. Projects from these studies incorporated by reference for the strategic plan, MTP, the Parks and Rec Plan, and economic development plans. We took all those plans and now those projects are listed in one, in one spot. So our next steps. So we have it open for comment online at onshamly.com documents. So we are still receiving comments from the public. Many want, who wants to comment on it and it's documented. That will be open till November twenty-second, or November twenty-fourth. And then the final plan, back to you guys and to the city, is December fourth. And they were hoping to come back December seventeenth. It's the target date at least for the city council for adoption. And we're also working on this, through the early two thousand twenty on the sustainability plan. We'll be talking about more bees in the first, first part of the year. That's it. I tried to do it very quick in executive summary fashion for you guys.
Thank you. And I also want to just take a moment to commend your team and the CPL teams. I cannot fault really the entire staff on all of the outreach and public outreach and engagement events you guys have. I think it's really, really awesome to see and the amount of participation versus some of the other things we've got has been, has been tremendous. And it's just, it's awesome. We really, really appreciate you guys taking the time and energy to do that.
It's been a great project for us.
With that said, I got to kick you away from the microphone. You'll call us later for us to ask you questions, but we got to open it up to the public. So this, the rules of order for this are a little bit different. Again, name and address in three minutes to tell us whatever you think. Almost whatever you think.
I'll keep it clean. My name is Louis Newmark. I live at thirty-four hundred, I still live at thirty-four hundred, but I'm here at three twenty in Shambling. Ladies and gentlemen, the council, I'm kind of a little bit freaked out with some of the things that are going on in the city. I really urge you to vote against the project that's being proposed at fifty-two thirty-eight Peachtree Road.
Louis, I want to clarify for you just a minute. This is a public hearing related specifically to the comprehensive plan.
This ties, this ties into the comprehensive plan because it has to do with walkability and all that stuff. So, so Malone Drive is the least walkable street in all of Shambling in terms of street with sidewalks or without sidewalks. We live in a land of disconnected sidewalks here. With all the additional development, we just cannot possibly support, you know, the existing developments that are coming on without some kind of traffic control. I've not seen the traffic studies built into any of these particular reports that we're seeing here. I've heard rumors that some traffic studies have been conducted. But it's not been shared with the public. And over the next twelve months, we're going to have over five hundred people residing in condos and apartments along, I'm sorry. We currently have over five hundred people residing in apartments and condos on Malone Drive. Their only access in and out of their buildings is onto Malone Drive. So what's going to happen here, that number is going to increase from two hundred and fifty-five units currently being occupied to over seven hundred and seventy units that will be occupied plus additional retail. Does not take into account the neighbors on the other side of our block, the five hundred plus tenants at the Oliver formerly known as the Olmstead. See a continuation of shortage of parking spaces, not just Malone Drive, but, you know, everywhere throughout town. Especially in the city district, Mercy Care senior residences have half their residences parking currently at the fifty-two thirty-eight Peachtree Road parking lot, as well as on the street. This is in addition to several hundred vehicles that come onto Malone Drive on a daily basis, Monday through Saturday to attend sessions of some type at Comcast. Never enough room for them in Comcast lots. These people are not walking. They're not taking market. They're not coming in there. So again, if you've got, if you'd like to see the independent studies that have been conducted for traffic, you know, I think it's clear to everyone in this room that the Malone Drive infrastructure as it stands now cannot sustain further increase in traffic beyond existing buildings and those that are currently nearing completion. So, you know, please require anything else that's going to be walkable or trafficable to go onto Peachtree Road.
Louis here, out of time.
Can I get a second, sir? Do you have a few more seconds? So I urge you to conduct due diligence and, and please conduct due diligence, do the right thing for the people of Shambling, for we, the people of Shambling. And the last comment I want to make is...
Louis here, I'm sorry, but you're out of time.
Thank you so much for your time.
You can tell us at the public hearing at the end of the meeting.
I will, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak about the comprehensive plan?
Brian for the fifty-two hundred Peachtree Road again. I'm just going to be really brief about it. I like a lot of the things in it, but what I usually see in these plans or don't see in these plans is sort of the granular details. And people do, if you want to increase walking, you have to really pay attention to those details. I'll just give you two quick examples. When people, construction puts street signs that block sidewalks, you not only make it difficult for pedestrians, you make it impossible for people in wheelchairs. I'll be blunt with you, and I know there's police officers here. I moved those signs out of the way when, when they're on the sidewalk because according to ADA, they're not supposed to be there. It's supposed to be in the street. The second point is even smaller detail. A traffic light, or excuse me, a pedestrian crossing light should never be a flashing hand. It should always be a countdown signal. Because when a pedestrian approaches a crossing light with a flashing hand, they don't know if it just started flashing or if it's about to end and the light's about to change red. If you see a countdown, you can tell how much time you have left. Those are the kind of little small details that actually really improve the ability of people to get around without a car. But you don't usually see them included in plans because, and I don't mean to offend anyone, people making these plans generally don't walk around that much. They have windshield perspective, as I like to call it. And that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else wishing to comment on the comprehensive plan?
Motion to exit the, the public hearing for non-zoning matters.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Tinkle, tinkle. All right, I will, I'll go ahead and call a question. Call the thing.
It's a favor.
It's a question. It's a question.
Do you vote?
I'll vote.
We have a motion in a second to exit the public hearing for non-zoning matters. That passes unanimously with councilman Mesa.
No, he's voted.
Yep, he's voted. All right. Did, did you watch? Just making sure. All right, all right, I'm sorry. At this point... Don't touch my hair on your way back. At this point, I'll call to order the, the regular work session announcements and presentations. I'll take just a quick moment to recognize Councilwoman-elect Karen Luffin is in the crowd tonight, or at least was earlier. There she is. Thank you for, thank you for joining us. John, do we have any other announcements or presentations this evening?
No, but I would ask the council to suspend the rules and make an amendment to the agenda to add a consideration of an ordinance to annex residential property on Campbell Road. Item number five for city manager.
So who?
We have a motion to a second.
Yep.
All those in favor? Motion to suspend the rules and add that to the agenda. Perfect.
Under.
Those need to be, all the city clerks, those need to be separate motions?
Typically, they are separate motions, yes.
So we have, would you like to restate your motion?
Motion, motion to suspend the rules and add an item to the agenda.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay. And I believe the request was to add...
Motion to add an item to the agenda to discuss an annexation matter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add consideration of the annexation of residential property on Campbell Road as item number five under city manager. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. That is added. Staff action items, three, A, approval of minutes, city council, public hearing work session October tenth, twenty nineteen. Any comments from council? Okay. And B, city council, any of any October fifteenth, twenty nineteen?
No.
Okay, city manager, item number one, Pruitt Health Land Swab.
Thank you. We have a request. It was, had been previously discussed, but to adopt an appraised value of the city's Shambling property located next to Pruitt Health Ashton Woods facility and to move forward with a land swap. Catherine Lee has some more information on that matter.
If we could just give a brief background, since Pruitt Health is another item on the agenda we may have for the folks that aren't familiar with that somewhere, like, previously.
Um, thank you, mayor and council. This is a totally separate item from Pruitt Health headquarters. This is a totally separate item from Pruitt Health Headquarters that we talked about during the public hearing. This has to do with their Ashton Woods facility that's been existing for a long time in Shamblay. And so what they're interested in is swapping land with the city, the city owns some land just east of their property with property that they own just north of their building. They were, appraisal and the survey were done. The properties are of equal value and equal size. They're both considered unremarkable and not marketable because they don't have any access and the geographic difficulties that they have. So they're of equal value.
Thank you. Thank you. My understanding was that this is also largely to clear up some title issues and encroachments, is that correct?
That's correct.
Any discussion from the council? Okay. We will move on to item number two, the charter update regarding municipal court judges.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll wait until this is done.
Good afternoon, members of the council. This request to charter change is basically in response to legislation that was adopted by the General Assembly that regulates the appointment of municipal court judges. The weight of the legislation is basically regulates the terms and reasons for termination of municipal court judges. And in order to be in compliance with the law, we must amend the current language of the charter. This is cost neutral. The only cost associated with this change is the posting of the notice in the legal artery. And a change is necessary in order to be in compliance with the law.
Thank you. Any discussion from council?
I've got a quick question. I understand we'll lose an hour of current municipal judge because she was just appointed to the Quinette Superior Court. Will that be a reappointment for us next year? I know it's kind of ancillary related, or is that gonna be something that we'll only act on this year?
As totally up to the council, you could actually use the associate judge as the acting judge. The chief probably could speak to that a little bit more.
You don't need to be acting for us on that matter. I know we can't tonight, it's coming up. Chief, you're a man of many words, thank you.
And then, I would also like to add that the charter change does not require the approval of the General Assembly. It could be done by home rule.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. See no discussion, I'll move on. Item number three.
Mayor, first time with this man, I apologize. I wanna make sure that it's okay to move this to a first read on Tuesday.
Is there any objection? They're saying objection out of the first read on Tuesday. The next item, I'm sorry, confused myself there. And I think you actually got a little bit ahead of me because that was item number two, which was the charter update. The first read would be the next item.
The charter update requires two reads as well.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So item number three is the ordinance update regarding municipal court judges. Thank you for keeping me on the straight and narrow.
There's, there's really nothing more to add to that one. It's simply to remain in compliance and update our ordinances that we have to reflect the changes that would be made in the charter.
Thank you. So, and I believe that'll need to move to first read as well. Is there any objection to that moving to first read? Okay, they'll move to first read. Any discussion? Perfect. Item number four, the Discover Shamblay Advisory Committee.
Thank you. We do have an item here to adopt a resolution establishing a Discover Cab Advisory Committee and appointing members for twenty twenty. At the September council meeting, council did adopt a motion to create a Discover Shamblay Advisory Committee. The staff has attached the resolution for your consideration and recommendations for members of the committee. Those recommendations are. Do include two residents, so section one and section two appoint two residents. Lindsay Cambardella and Jenna Dunham have been recommended. Section three and four recommend or appoint two council members, and that is for consideration. Section five and six, two staff members were to be on that, city staff members, so that would be Catherine Lee and Tisa Moore are recommended. And then section seven and eight are two Discover Cab, or I'm sorry, two hoteliers in the city. And so we do have Mohammed Hossein and Tim Michaud, Micho, recommended. And then section nine and section ten are two Discover Cab staff members. And those names provided. There may be some changes to that name, I believe Sarah Stevman may have, has left Discover Cab, so we may update that soon.
Thank you.
Would you need a motion of the names of the council members in the motion on Tuesday?
Yes. If you will provide those names in the motion for those two items, that would be sufficient.
I was a bit surprised you didn't provide recommendations like you did for all the other positions. Would you like to clarify that?
Happy to provide recommendations. I would.
You're fine, don't worry about answering that. Any other discussion from the council?
Yeah, what's the provision for the Discover Cab folks leaving their position or the hoteliers selling their business, et cetera? Do those get replaced by council, by council approval?
We really don't, did not consider that when this resolution was, was put together. We could look at adding a section that essentially says that it, all of these are dependent upon their position. Any change would require a new appointment.
I think where the resident and the council member might be more of a permit situation, at least they move, of course.
I think there was also some concern about regular attendance, you know, that there was, there isn't provision of that, that they missed three meetings in a row or something like that, or could that be added also?
Uh, we can, we can add something to that.
John, are these temporary until they, I mean, will these come back up with our annual appointments?
So we would envision that this would be an annual appointment process. In this resolution, we did propose that you would be appointing half every year. We could make that an annual process for, and have every appointment each year.
Thank you. Brian, is that something you'd like to request or?
I mean, I think it, I, I, I don't know how we structure it, whether it be some two years, some one year, but I, I think it needs to come up with our, with our annual appointments every year.
It will be done with the annual appointments, yes. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so that will carry forward towards, to Tuesday. And just to clarify for staff, are you looking for those changes to be made by Tuesday? And if so, I'd like to look to the rest of council to see if they agree.
I would just defer to staff if people are comfortable preparing those, that, that, those provisions, they can at least legally get, I had it next December meeting, if that's, I mean, I don't have a preference either way.
Does this need to be adopted this month, or would you prefer to move that to December and spend some more time with that?
We can make those changes if, if the council requests. We are coming up on January, if we want to make this part of the annual appointment process this year. But we, we can move this forward. I feel like we can make the change regarding attendance and regarding the structure such that if a change is made or if someone loses a position or relinquishes a position or their presidency, that they would automatically be removed. We can, we can add that, those two sections in, I believe, before Tuesday.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, any objection? Nope. Okay, so that will carry forward to Tuesday as amended. Item number five, for those that may have forgotten, we added an item to consider the annexation request for residential properties on Caldwell Road.
Thank you. This is a slightly different annexation request than typical. We have two properties that are in the city. However, they are also in the city of Brookhaven, so they receive two tax notices. They have requested to be de-annexed from the city of Brookhaven and complete annexed in their entirety into the city of Shamblay. Both of these are located on Caldwell Road. And so the city of Brookhaven has informed us that this, the de-annexation of those two properties will be on the agenda in December. They only require, I believe, one read for the ordinance or, or they will be able to make that motion and adopt that ordinance in December. We are moving forward with an annexation request and we will have an ordinance read this month and then consideration in December. So it is two properties on Caldwell Road. We do have their information and I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Perfect, thanks. So for us simple folks, there are two folks that currently live in Brookhaven and Shamblay, and they've chosen us as their prom date, and we're trying to make that right. Is that fair?
So just two, uh, John, there's just two properties. You mentioned a third, but.
There is, there are three properties impacted by the way the line was drawn, but two properties have requested this action. But there is not.
And, and from the map, it does look like they, they accessed their property from the Shamblay side.
Yes, they are, the residences do have driveways onto, and the houses are in Shamblay.
They want access to our lease sucker.
Did we reach out to the third person?
Uh, we have, we have reached out to the third, it's, it's, I believe, an absentee owner. And we've reached out, the city of Brookhaven has reached out, to no avail at this point. This action to take effect next year has to be completed in December, and that would make it effective for the tax, effective essentially January first of next year.
So there was a third, there was a third. And so if that's being split, does that become like what Joe suggested, possibly a boundary issue that gets Mac handled without their input if they're not reachable?
Well, the third, because they didn't request a, a de-annexation from the city of Brookhaven, they would have to take action to de-annex it on their own. And it is a smaller, it's much smaller, the, the third parcel has much less of an impact.
Would that, would that be solved by having a legislation brought forth at the state to clarify the boundaries?
It would, but that would be a process that would have to go through the General Assembly and then, you know, move to fruition.
So why would, why would we pursue that, that strategy? It seems pretty easy to me.
Sorry if you can.
Excuse me, Bill.
I'm sorry, sorry, we, we can't add him unless it's a direct question. Are you one of the property owners?
I am the property owner.
Okay, if you could just give us a minute, if council has a question for you, they'll, they'll probably, yeah, forgive you a chance. You just gotta follow the rules, I'm sorry.
Oh, we could do that. This procedure is faster and as clean as, as coming through the organization.
If he has something to say, I'd like to hear what he has to say. But other than that, I don't have any questions.
Is there any objection?
No objection.
No objection from council, do you want to call up and just?
I will, I do apologize. I will say, I believe we've advertised a public hearing for Tuesday, is that correct on this matter?
Yes, sir, it has been advertised for Tuesday.
So, so there will be an opportunity for, for those to stop looking on that.
Come on up. You will have a chance to speak on the record in favor and opposition on Tuesday. Where's the microphone?
My name is Ronald Menard, thirty-two, twenty-two Caldwell Road. When Brookhaven became a city, they decided to split New York in half. I got the brunt. My garage sits in Brookhaven, my house sits in Shamblay. When I got the taxes, I got taxes for Shamblay, I got taxes for Brookhaven. Well, I came up to Shamblay City Hall, talked to Ms. Marcy. She said, well, you should give me to annex everything into Shamblay. I said, fine, where do I sign? She said, no, it's not. Shamblay started picking up my, my refuge and everything. Brookhaven doesn't do anything for me. I paid over four thousand dollars in taxes to Brookhaven.
Wow.
For my garage. Now they're right. Why should I be paying two school taxes, one on the house and one on my garage? And that's why I'm here tonight, because I wanna get everything back together and pay one property tax.
Thank you for, for bringing that to our attention and thank you for choosing us. We, we've always thought we were the better of the two, but we appreciate you confirming it. I said, I said, thank you for choosing us. We've always thought we were the better of the two. We appreciate you confirming it. I will, I will, we appreciate your support. I will have to ask you to hold your comments until Tuesday when we actually have a public hearing.
All right.
Unfortunately, it wasn't advertised in time, so we can't, we're not really supposed to give those to council.
I got it in the mail, saying I needed to be here tonight and Tuesday.
And on Tuesday. So on, on Tuesday, this will move to Tuesday night with council support. And what'll happen on Tuesday is just like there were some folks in the beginning of the meeting that had to speak in favor, opposition will come up again. You'd have an opportunity to speak to us, speak in favor of it. And then there would be a vote, or I'm sorry, and read of this ordinance later, later that evening. Because this requires two months based on our city charter, it would then carry forward to December, at which point they would do that on the annexation.
Take all the time you need, I just want to be all back together. I want one property tax, Sean, that's all I need.
Understood, thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming out to the little night. Sorry to have to cut you short.
No problem.
And just for clarification, this item or related item, the zoning map is also the development department's list of items is the first item.
So this would carry forward to Tuesday night, has any objection?
No objection.
No objection? Do you need a motion?
No, sir. What I need to know is if I can move this to a first read for Tuesday, please.
Please, please.
I thought, I thought we got that.
I just needed to clarify.
So the next item on the agenda is under Development Department, PZ twenty nineteen, five fifty-nine, thirty-two sixteen and thirty eighteen Caldwell Road zoning map. And then it's my understanding this is the same item, it is just to actually zone the property once it's furnished to the city.
That's correct. That, that's, the public hearing on Tuesday will be before the reads, I mean, no one else.
Any discussion? Okay, so that will move to first read, absent an objection. Saying no, I'll move to first read on Tuesday. PZ twenty nineteen, five twenty-two, fifty-two thirty-eight Peachtree Road, that is a through of help DCI. I will turn it over to, it looks like Brian's got his mic lit up already, it's also.
My mic has been lit up the entire time. No, I just, I just have a couple of questions. If the gentleman could, yeah, first, yeah, yeah, I can't, I'm sorry, I'm terrible with names.
Tyler Moore.
So I was in a, I was in a fast food joint the other day, and they just listed me as blue tie, so I could have gone to green tie. So help me understand a little bit more about the operations because I'm still just a little bit confused, and I know that has nothing really to do with the, the actual zoning, but I wanna understand, the cafe again is open to the public. How do we know, how does the general public know that there's a cafe there that's open to the public? There's no building signage or anything like that, correct? So.
Yeah, they are proposing signage above the cafe.
So there's a sign above the cafe and so people coming by will know. So what about, has somebody mentioned the gym being open to the public as well? How does that work?
So it's, it's. Yeah, sure, sure. It's, it's a physical therapy that's open to the public, so I have a fitness component of the physical therapy that's open to the public.
So you, you make an appointment and?
It would not be a gym membership, it would be physical therapy services offered. So perhaps our neighbors at Mercy Care, they need physical therapy services, they would be able to come and get those services there at the.
Okay, so there's no, there's no actual gym that people can come to?
We're not gonna be letting this.
Okay, I got you, I got you. So on, on the daily operations, talk to me a little bit about the traffic flow. Your, your, your folks, most folks will arrive at and come to work at nine o'clock. Is that an accurate statement, nine to five? Is that, is, is there a, a general flow of traffic when people come and when people? I'm talking about your, your facility you're at now, when you're at work now. How many of your employees actually come down at nine versus ten, eleven, twelve? What does that flow of traffic look like, where you are now?
So we currently, we have silent starts, some people come at seven fifteen, and then up until about nine-thirty is our front flow. We are formally headquartered in Tacoa, Georgia, so we still have employees that live. Um, we are formally headquartered in Toccoa, Georgia, so we still have employees that live in the northern part of the state. We have a bus system that brings, we have two buses that bring, two thirty passenger buses bring some of those employees down. So we would foresee some of our employees being bussed out to the Shamley.
So you're currently planning to bring two buses from Toccoa on a regular basis?
That would be the plan, yes.
Okay. Um, I can't read my own writing. I made some notes when you were talking earlier and I can't, uh, give me an idea. I want to follow up on the gentleman's question earlier about construction. If, if everything worked out and this was approved, what, what do you project as the actual construction date as it relates to what's already going on with construction on Peachtree Road and the sidewalk issues and all that kind of stuff?
So best case scenario, if we gained approval, we have not drawn the office bulletin, construction documents, firm reading, LDP, et cetera. Um, we're late third quarter, early fourth quarter, um, likely start. Uh, so I, I, that would probably be best case scenario.
So best case, early fourth quarter of twenty twenty?
Late third quarter, early fourth quarter.
And, and construction on Peachtree Road hopefully will be finished by... I know I'm putting you on the spot, but just you, just...
Hopefully this summer.
The summer.
Summer.
So prior to there, hopefully prior to there.
Hopefully, yes.
I'm, I know there's a lot of hope here, but I'm just trying to, trying to wrap my head around this.
The es, the estimated completion date is in July.
Okay. So July as of now, okay. All right. That's, that's it for me. I don't have any questions.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a stab here. Uh, so the, um, we communicated a little bit about the traffic study and, um, uh, the thing that concerns me is it seems like there are, um, uh, sort of the, uh, the foundation of the study doesn't really speak to, um, our area very well. It seems to me that there is, uh, a limitation to, um, the busy time of being only one hour. Uh, and I also thought that I read that the engagement with Peachtree Boulevard wasn't really taken into consideration because it was felt that the traffic coming from, uh, the subject property was going to contribute less than seven percent of the, um, uh, of the, the traffic at that intersection. And so I'm, um, I really don't know, um, there's always, you know, I've, I've been engaged in different traffic study experiences where I thought traffic was going to be insane and it turned out to be not really that bad. Uh, and this could be that way. Uh, but I think for the sake of, uh, the health of Malone in particular, I don't know that, um, the traffic study methodology that is, uh, that has currently been used properly represents or captures, uh, truly what the hardship to that road really is going to be. And I don't know, um, you know, if there are multiple, if there are multiple methodologies that are used to try to understand what that might be. Uh, but I just wanted to express my concern in that area, uh, because I believe that we are, are only now, just now, uh, beginning to, uh, see development, um, of the scope where we're going to rely heavily on traffic studies to understand what the impact of the developments are actually going to be here. I mean, I think that this is, uh, in, in my twelve years on council as it relates to projects where the additional traffic was concerned, uh, I can't tell you that I have a memory of there being another development that I've been concerned about. And with this one coming up, I am very excited about the density. All the, all the positives that come from this project are fantastic, but I don't know, I don't know that we truly as a city, uh, fully understand what the burden to the roadway is going to be based on what the projected traffic might be. So that's one comment. Um, another comment is, I hope that we can, um, because of the, uh, uh, intensity of the, uh, the desire to have pedestrian activity, uh, coexist with the project, you know, in larger cities, I always remember seeing, uh, the plywood put up that actually creates a shell that protects, uh, people that are walking or, um, using a, um, a wheelchair to, uh, continue to use the sidewalk as, as normal. And I hope that we might consider, uh, using some of that, um, as a means to be able to make sure that we are, um, continuing to have access to using the sidewalk without having to, um, deal with other, uh, potential interruptions, uh, you know, in that. So that's another comment I wanted to make. Um, I appreciate the clarification on the cafe. I think that, you know, one of the things about the project that has, uh, has concerned me since the beginning has been the, uh, the desire for us to have the space engage the, uh, the sidewalk in particular, uh, because of its exposure to the MARTA station. And I think the, the steps that have been made are good. You know, I'm still a little offended by there, there being that private park, uh, in the back of the space, which to me seems to be possibly potentially very super underutilized, whereas a reconfiguration of the floor plan, uh, where the walls actually are to make the space, the public space at the front of this project bigger, um, I hope council will give consideration to possibly mandating, uh, that there be more green space in the front facing the sidewalk across from what hopefully will be an incredibly busy MARTA station in the future. Uh, it just seems to me that when you, uh, when you walk out and engage it, you'll have, you know, the, um, the courtyard is really nice. It creates a place for, uh, folks in the office to come down to have lunch possibly and sit on the sidewalk and watch, watch the cars go by. Uh, but it doesn't really do anything for the rest of the community. And I think that one of the things that, um, you know, has been a theme with Pruitt through this process is, uh, their concern with various, uh, measures that are going to be taken to keep the place secure, uh, and that sort of thing. I just really hope that you'll, uh, give extra consideration to, uh, the idea that Shamley is a very open place and that we want you to have all the security you need, but we really do want that, that spaces there are immediately, uh, upon the sidewalk to be able to have, uh, access to, um, the public so that we can all use the space. We're, we're a very open community and, um, you know, we've come a long way with this project. I just think that we, there's a little bit more, in my opinion, that has to be done to, to achieve that. Um, you know, I really, I, I, um, am encouraged to hear that Pruitt engages in having flex schedules to be able to alleviate some of the, uh, the, the real serious concerns I think that a lot of people in the community have about the potential of the traffic. Um, I hope that you'll, um, I hope that will become a priority of an HR in terms of being able to try to see if you can incentivize them and even incentivizing the use of MARTA, uh, as well. And I mean, a significant, a meaningful, um, a, a meaningful incentive and not just some cursory, well, we offered them a, you know, some sort of a whatever and they're not using it. I hope that you'll try to help be, be a, a very proactive, uh, part of the solution to what we all can possibly see as, um, a potential problem in the community. Um, and so then I, um, I think those are my only comments. I, you know, was going to ask for this item to be addressed, but tonight I'm really not. I just wanted to make sure that my, my concerns are known so that, uh, we can move forward together to create, um, as good a, uh, development project as possible. Um, was, was the development department aware of the buses coming in to drop off the employees?
I personally was not. I'm not sure about other people on staff.
Okay. I would just, you know, between now and any time that action's taken on this project, maybe Tuesday, there'll be a clarification as to where they'll go, how they'll unload or how they'll load, how long they'll be there, what the periods of time are that they'll be, uh, there, because that to me could be a fantastic solution, um, you know, in, in more ways than one, but it can also, uh, uh, have a negative, uh, impact of blocking a lane of traffic for forty-five minutes during rush hour or what have you. Uh, they may decide to go ahead and pull on the property and not actually do that, uh, at that loading and unloading spot, or maybe we actually prohibit them from doing so. So, do you guys want to address that now? Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Um, yes, that'll be on our property. We, we were not, or planned to do that. We, um, it'll be, we, we can separate this plan, so we'll pull back behind our property, get a parking deck and do it on our property.
Okay.
And not on streets.
And that's all I got. Thank you for your information.
So I have a couple of questions to say. I don't think we're answered, forgive me if they were. Answer them again. Uh, in regards to the Latin, not using ramps in your parking deck, what have you decided to have flat plates?
So we have flat plates. I think you grabbed, I don't know, the department, but the, the flat plates are going to be in the front along Peachtree. We'll have ramps in the back to be able to access the different levels.
Well, that was not, that was not the spirit in which we propose that you have flat plates to allow and, and alleviate...
I may not be explaining that the right way. Yep. That's above my pay grade.
Okay.
Yes, the, the front part towards Peachtree has flat plates.
Okay.
And then towards the back of the property, that's as the ramps.
That's where you have ramps, okay. Got to have ramps.
Sorry about that.
Um, so did you explore, um, I, I know that we're asking for forty percent, uh, shape on the, the top. Did you explore, and it was my impression when I, uh, had a conversation with you that it, it was, you were thinking that it needed to be a solid structure. Did you explore having a green roof instead?
We received a thought and that suggestion from another council member, so it was a cost thing. It would cost less. In our minds, it is up above and nobody's going to see, but I understand that's a very incentive. It's not something you guys want to agree by understanding that. We didn't do a cost analysis to be clear with you.
I mean, I, considering that it would still be subject to winds and all that kind of stuff, it, it would be cheaper. And, I mean, I keep batting zero or less on trying to get people to do this. Um, they can be very beautiful and, and they will be seen from above. We're about to have a rooftop deck on the Manapro Building or Four Roses Building, whatever it's called. It'll be seen. It'll be, it'll be seen enough to make me happy. Um, I think that's it.
So I just wanted to follow up in Tom, I believe he was point two about the sidewalks of being open. I think Brian Crowe, Citizen, also mentioned it being, looking throughout the project. I did want to point out that, uh, on later in the, uh, agenda, I do have an agenda I have to address is, I believe it says applying the Americans, uh, Disabilities Act to work zones. And that would, that would specifically include closing the sidewalks and how those were managed. I understand there might need to be some work, but there, then Tom talked about the plywood. There's some examples listed in there, so I would hope that, um, as a condition of approval, that you, uh, because I think since y'all are in parallel tracks, we may not have that policy implemented, but you follow that policy, uh, as a condition of approval, absolutely will work.
One, one more question. As it, um, pertains to shared parking, what are your thoughts?
We've heard a lot of interesting requests and thoughts, um, and let me say that we are open to the thought. There's a lot of devil's mind details from security and liability especially, uh, but we're open to have, continuing to have that conversation, um, with you guys.
Good.
All right, one more and the same thing. Um, I've heard, at least it was my understanding that the cafe would always be open to the public from the sidewalk and public street. Just wanted to confirm, so the other day it would just be, be a reception. Confirm, so it would actually be from the sidewalk and public sidewalk street. Do you have any other, Brian?
Yeah, so Chris, I just want to clarify too, because I, I mean, when you're looking at, at this photo on the screen, you know, we did, we, you and I spent some time talking about moving that courtyard and, and the space to the front and y'all made a significant change. There, there was absolutely nothing else you could do to get that courtyard brought to the, I mean, reorienting the building. I mean, I get that the city said you got to build a building up to the street and we kind of backed off of that and made, you know, made it, uh, more amenable for you to be able to, to put this up to the front, but I would still like to see that courtyard accessible, not necessarily in that location. I don't say, you know, folks should be entering your property, but there was nothing else you could do to orient the building to get that courtyard to the front.
We took a hard look at it and our architects did, um, and also the design architects for the interior also looked at the footprint. Um, and this really was the farthest you could push this building back to not really hurt true functionality in the way these offices are used, the conference facility is used, conference rooms, training. Um, we picked up three thousand feet, shrunk that courtyard by the same. Um, really felt like we were able through that to create this really unique, um, landscape terrace. This terrace will have a place to eat. I mean, this is a very large outdoor area that'll be open to public use. So we really feel like from what we did from a functionality perspective, we couldn't push that building back any further.
I mean, I just see it as a lot of, I mean, and don't take offense to this, because I don't mean it that way, but I see the courtyard in the back is a lot of wasted space. Um, you're, 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 I, I can tell you, uh, your, your, your folks are probably, they're going to walk through it to get back and forth to wherever they're going, but there's, nobody's going to actually allow, we don't allow smoking, so...
And we don't either.
Yeah.
But we have not designed that backyard. So what you see today is not going to be the end result for the private backyard of Pruitt Healthcare.
And you, you have plenty of experience with the, your other, um, facilities, even though they're not office, but, but you have outdoor space for your employees and tell us, i- is it well used or not?
It is. Um, at our current location, we have an outdoor facility or outdoor area including a walking trail, which we hope to have at this location. Um, we have a half mile walking trail around our current location that we encourage our employees and staff to use and, and take exercise breaks throughout the day.
But we're going to encourage them to be walking that half mile down the street to places like Himalaya at some point.
And actually too, I, I think we have the ability, when the rail trail's complete, um, just to the west of us.
Yes.
That we can actually access that and access more restaurants and amenities. And I mean, that's a big draw for this site.
I would also, I, I saw that you had some, uh, some feature up, uh, as part of a, like kind of artistic or decorative screening for the parking. I really like that. I, I would be very interested too, if, uh, if it works out with your design, if you had the opportunity, kind of like a water feature down here in the, in the area to kind of create that noise and the visuals to, you know, kind of offset the, the, so much steel that's on the, on the side.
We met with a neighbor, neighboring, um, community a couple nights ago and had a lot of great ideas, um, and we plan on incorporating them, um, for that area that makes it not just a place, an urban place that has maybe a bench and not a lot of grass. We want it to be a place that Pruitt can obviously use, but also the community can come and use and walk their dogs and have a trash can so they can walk their dog. That's, that's, that's important to us and that's something we're definitely going to focus on with the community.
Which place are you referring to, that four, five, six...
Yes, that three thousand plus acre landscape terrace. Because, acid acres.
Yeah.
Short feet.
I see.
It's pretty cheap.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is PZ twenty nineteen, five forty-three, thirty-seven, eleven, Flarmont Road Parking Variance. Any discussion from council? Sam, is Sammy still here?
He made a left. He made a left. All right, give him one.
Matt, did, did the applicant mention anything to you about shared parking agreements with the storage unit or, uh, you mentioned a couple places?
No, we, we talked about that and, um, in our discussions, I said they weren't willing to enter into, into actual agreements. He was talking about there are some on-street parking spaces on Brad that are public spaces that were built as part of the storage, but to my understanding, there's no formal agreements that they have between properties.
Did he mention anything with PDK?
He did not.
He was going to talk tomorrow about the space next door.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda, fifty-one twenty-six Peachtree Boulevard Variance, that is for Solis Park. That would be assigned as variance. Does any discussion? No?
Okay.
That was the banner signs on the building.
Yeah, how many other signs do they currently have, um? None? I know, I'm putting you on the spot. Big time tonight.
I'm, I'm, I'm positive there are other signs that...
Do you all already have other signs up? Uh, we have a temporary sign in place that actually came down in the west, the other night, so at the moment, we don't have anything up.
And next item on the agenda is PZ twenty nineteen, five forty-six. That is the Glacier PDS Capital DCI.
Did we get the gentleman from Johns Creek Baptist Church that had the, uh, the new about all the specifics of the graveyard? Did we get his contact info? Through seven? Would you share that with the city manager before you leave?
Matt, just for clarification, the dear, but you wanted to see more detail on the panels, is that correct? They just want council to look at. They actually want to see this project. Yeah. Uh, no, not just, they didn't really, they didn't say that. They just recommended, it was more recommending that they get the information and submit it for you all to review. So, they didn't really make a recommendation on the metal, because they didn't feel they had enough information. They did not make a recommendation that it come back to them. But that is something that you'll be doing. Thank you, Trusman.
So, I've got a couple of questions on this. When, currently, we have a pretty harsh facade from New Peachtree and looking at the sanctuary. When we, when they cross the seventy percent threshold, we make them come into compliance. But it seems like we focus on the streetscape. And so, my question is, is there any kind of a finistration requirement that is?
So, in the UDO, there's an exemption for finistration for churches and fire stations. So, that's definitely something that we could go back to the UDO if you'd like us to get rid of that exemption. It was in there, it's just been in there, I'm not sure.
I just would highly encourage possibly the applicant to take note of the simplicity of the view from New Peachtree to the building and possibly encourage the property owner to at least possibly with some paint or something to create the idea of finistration for the purposes of being able to give us some sort of a breakup in what we're looking at. Because currently, when we're looking at the concrete wall, it's a little less than what possibly could be considered fully attractive in terms of a view from New Peachtree. Tom, is that a question? Did you want to comment on that? I'd like to really ask you a question, I'm just kind of really expressing a concern.
I mean, I think I need to explain it, but the concrete wall is the church, the existing church.
I understand.
Yeah, so what we're planning to do is because the building's the ten thousand square feet and the portion that's facing Peachtree would be pretty harsh. And it's to build a concrete building to match. And existing really, I don't think it's appropriate. So, we were looking for a material that would give the same sense of the concrete. That would be a more contemporary material and using the metal panels. So, what you are looking at though is that we have the metal panels, it's an architectural panel. Well, you see those verticals, but only, those were originally shown to be spandau glass. And the spandau glass, which is not visible, you can't see through it, so it's opaque. It's a, it is a glass material that we showed there, because the church did not want finistration for privacy reasons, I suppose, from the street. So, we showed those and it's stated in the application that it's spandau glass. So, it breaks it up and it breaks, if you look at the wall of the church.
Thanks, Trusman. Thank you. Any other questions?
So, I have a question, looking at this drawing, from Mr. Epstein actually. The drawing, the brown. The drawing, the brown is the, is the actual church that's existing and the white is the new construction. Am I saying this correctly?
Yes.
Got you. And you say there's nothing that can be done on the brown panel to kind of get the illusion it's not just a.
Well, they're not really brown, they're, it's a.
I understand, and the illustration is brown.
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
Is there anything that can be done cosmetically that could just make that look a little less flat?
Well, we were planning to, our part of the project is not including any renovation altogether.
This is the site, this is the variance for the entire site, not just one building.
That hadn't been raised.
I don't necessarily, I think that the, I think that the trees planted are enough to soften that facade. And I would be hesitant to require that, because this building has these gorgeous, the way that it's designed, it has these gorgeous stained glass windows that you see. Only, I get that, I get that, I get that. But I would hate to see that effect lost. I would. Maybe there'd be a way to do something to decorate the facade, but.
Are you commenting against me?
I'm commenting against you, actually. And, but I, but I do have a question about the amount of landscaping, because there isn't any shown around the new, the addition. Now, is there some plan?
There's a landscape plan.
Oh, okay.
But we produced this, this is just, it's considered, I'm sorry. This is considered, there is a, I'm sorry, it's a sketchup rendering that we did.
Okay.
And so, that sketchup rendering was done simultaneously as the landscape plan was being developed. So, we could not include that in the rendering way in a short timeframe.
And I have a question for you. Don't we have a, don't we have a, I'll call it disallow. So, I'm blanking on the word, but don't we not allow metal panels unless they're considered decorative or architectural? Because I know the only time we've done it in the past is tradition for like the honeycomb required as part of automated fixtures. Because I'm dealing with things like that. When I look at that panel, to me, that doesn't really look like a architectural panel. That looks like a piece of siding.
Yeah, they're asking for a variance.
For that specifically?
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm kind of blown away at the materials choice. I think that we have this concrete wall that has no architectural detail whatsoever. It's a big block wall that's often in very much need of being pressure washed. It's ugly, it's all get out. I think a lot of people have a lot of respect for what goes on there. So, there's really not much trouble that's raised about it. But I think as it relates to, you know, continuing the, in expanding the use here, I just, I'm shocked that you all have pursued this metal and you have not pursued something that's more in line with wood, even to soften up the area. That you haven't taken more of a, of an approach to thinking about how the building might engage the sidewalk and the street. I'm just disappointed big time.
I know exactly what you mean by that.
Sorry, I don't think there was a question there. Any, is there a question there? Would you like to make a question?
I just want to make sure that we understand that the trees that are being proposed provide enough of a buffer to the cemetery. I make sure the gentleman is able to articulate what his concern was, other than the fact that he thought maybe the kids that played on that block were an attractive nuisance and causing trash and what have you. So, I guess just in your opinion, is, are the trees that are being planted enough? Or does there need to be a row of shrubs between there in order to be able to create privacy for the cemetery?
Based on what's submitted, they're proposing four trees in that location. If you want it to be more of a buffer, then I would recommend a condition to that extent to have that either planted a buffer standard or a specific type of tree spaced a certain distance to create that spread.
I think that the issue with the current cemetery now is that the, that area, because it's a flat grassy field, it attracts a lot of soccer play and stuff and then a lot of trash is left behind. And the way that the fence is constructed, there's no accessibility for anybody to clean up. And it's just this kind of, so I mean, I think there's an opportunity, not necessarily to hide with the trees, but I think there's an opportunity to, and I don't know that the people that are in the cemetery care about privacy. So, we're trying to screen them. I mean, but I think we need to do better job of figuring out how to get access in there. So, people can pick up the trash and that kind of stuff like that, and I don't know. And I was unaware that it was, you know, three different owners. You got, you know, the church, you got Elmer on the ICT, and now you have the property owner for the cemetery. It's a separate person. I'm glad that we got that contact information, because that's been a thorn in our side for a while. So, that's why we're staying on that.
Elmer used to own the church. Elmer used to own the church.
But apparently he didn't own the cemetery.
Thank you, I would say I, you know, wish you would have taken the character of the city and the area into more consideration in designing that building. I find it out of line with everything we're trying to accomplish and incredibly unattractive. I think it, you know, I think it could be, I think the design elements are there, but to look at that and look at that panel, I just, I don't think it's in line with anything, anything else in the city, frankly. The next item on the agenda is forty-seventy-three Peachtree Road Variance is in waivers out of the antique building renovation.
My question's for staff. What is our policy or what's the law with regard to graffiti removal from the rear of those buildings that face the heart and the road?
So, if it, typically, if it's not visible from a joint property or a street, it, we're not necessarily going to know about it. But technically, any graffiti would be considered a property maintenance violation.
Okay, so just has to cure any other property maintenance issue?
That's right.
And then, provided that the approval goes through, of course, what is the relationship between our approval of the variance and the functionality of the limited capacity on sewer due to their, they're restricted to thirty gallons, which is not going to be enough to operate an office building? Will their CO be held up until they get the proper sewer capacity there?
So, they will be required to submit a maintenance permit and that'll be routed to the county for sewer capacity.
And then, so the sewer will determine whether, the county will determine whether they've got enough sewer capacity to, to open their business?
Well, I guess if it's on a private septic system though, that would be more regulated by the county health department. So, but it'll definitely require some type of review and approval.
Do we have final oversight on that? So that we can kind of make sure that it's all done, so that it's in awesome.
Yeah, we issue the permit, that's right, that's correct, yeah. We definitely would, we're the permit issuer, so it would definitely be all routed through that.
So, you can hold it up until everything's clear, we have proper sewer for everybody?
So, Mr. Pierce, is that a, is that a pump station to the septic field? Or is that a pump station to the county sewer main?
We are connected to the county sewer. The pumping station pumps from our barbecue restaurant and from the antique into the outfall, which is by the roads of India. So, yeah, we do. We would love to have these guys in there and look forward to working with them.
Is there, Matt, in your experience, do you have any knowledge of what, you know, have no idea what thirty gallons a day is and how, and the site, and the building of this size?
Which Larry can tell you.
I mean, I mean, what is the, what is this, what is this proposed project?
Sure, I mean, a toilet flush is, I think, around two gallons. So, you'd have to run it into fifteen toilet flushes.
And how many people? And how many people are projected to be working in this?
That'd be a good question for. Matt, it's the other way, it's about two and a half flushes per gallon. So, you're talking about seventy-five flushes a day, not including sinks and hand washing and other things.
You don't want to know how many people are going to be working in that building, so do we know?
I don't know if they have, is that, if you can still hear, I don't know.
Hey, I'm David Naverich, I work with Greenlee, the company buying the property, forty thirty-eight Elm Street, Chamberlain. The building's about twenty-four thousand square feet. We're going to lose about four thousand square feet to common area. And then, our company is going to take about six thousand square feet. So, and our, we'll have about twenty people on a day-to-day basis. So, twenty in our six thousand square feet. And then, the other fourteen, because of the parking restrictions, we're going to target businesses that have pretty low employee counts. So, our specs will definitely be most dense. So, double that, we're aiming for fifty to sixty people in the building working there.
Right, so based on those numbers that somebody gave you, one point two flushes per person or something like that. So, it's probably not enough.
But if they, if they are connected to the county sewer system, we will require approval from the council.
And then, I guess we're concerned that there is the likelihood that the county would probably not approve that kind of density, so.
Without improvements to the. But it sounds like we've got.
It's a long, I took the long way home, but I think I got there.
Sounds like we've got an adjacent property owner that's really to work with them on the pump station. And I would think that would be something that you could condition any approval, should you so choose. Any, any other questions for the applicant? Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
The next item on the agenda is forty-eight oh five Peachtree Road waiver. That is for tree removal at the old brick barbecue pit.
Yes, this is not on the public hearing, it's because it's a waiver. So, there is no public hearing for this particular request. This is, I do have some slides, you can see them, but we can just paste it on the staff memo here. There's a trees in an area where there's a private stormwater pipe that has to be repaired by the property owner. In order to do that, all of the existing trees have to be removed, according to the applicant. The D H to zero. Commercial sites are required to have a hundred tree unit or density units. And they're requesting to waive that down to zero. Staff has recommended denial of the request, because there are alternative methods to meet that requirement, such as paying into the tree bank. The UDO have to provide a certain percentage on-site, so even, so if the waiver was denied, they would have to provide a certain amount of tree density units on-site, plus paying to the tree bank. It, we ran this through with the city arborist. They agreed that the trees should not be replanted where that stormwater pipe is. There may be opportunities where the property owner could build some new areas, landscape islands in the parking lot to meet that minimum required to be planted on-site. So, there are some options available. But the entire tree density cannot be purchased through the tree bank. Some trees do have to be planted on-site.
It's my understanding that he's also asking for a variance on paying to the tree bank.
That's right, that's right. He's trying to get waiver from.
So, I would much rather hear him, you know, hear an option where they are actually planting something, you know, rather than meeting that, at least that minimum requirement on that site. And as far as the tree bank is concerned, I would defer to the rest of the members of council.
I've got a question relating to that, I believe, for the applicant. So, I understand the concern with the remaining space primarily being the parking lot of the building and planting a tree actually ripping out the asphalt long-term. Is there an opportunity to get any greenery there, even if it's some, something implanted lots of, I'll look at Councilwoman Robson, because she's much better at that than I am, but something, just put some greenery in front, even if it might not need tree density?
Sure. A part of our concern is that we are spending money to repair a pipeline that has nothing to do with our property. The water is coming from New Peachtree and from the rail lines. And looking at the log, it became clear, and Mr. Wiggins helped us and several other people in the city and in the county, helped us to realize that it was because the pipe was built and we could never find any easements as to who might have built the pipe. So, we got to take responsibility, it's on our property. But had we not built a pipe, any problems with a drainage ditch would have been, in this case, the city's responsibility. So, we're going to be spending up to twenty-five thousand dollars to repair something that really has nothing to do with our property. And so, that's why we're asking that we wouldn't have any additional costs. We could certainly, would be more than willing to do any types of greenery that we could. But looking at the property, it's, it's all parking, other than that strip where the pipe is going to be. But we, we would certainly be willing to do.
There's a strip between the, had that parking was directly in front of the restaurant, in there a strip of grass or something there?
That to the south is, that's where those pictures are. That is where all of our trees are. The only other trees are on the bank in the back. There are a number of trees there, but they're not, they're not on our property.
I was asking about the front of the restaurant, trying to try to pull it up on the.
Yeah, that's right.
There's a, yeah, there is a strip and there is a, it looks like most of the grass is in the city right-of-way on Brady Boulevard. But I don't know, there's some opportunity, it looks like there's some opportunity there to.
Why can't they go with the rest of them?
I think there's probably a limit, because there's power lines overhead, but there's a limit to what, how the height of what could be planted. But there's something that could be planted in that area.
I think that would be the.
Matt, why can't they plant in the right-of-way with our permission, DOT's permission, to beautify, beautify the lawn?
They can, right-of-way trees don't count towards tree density, because they're public trees. That could be potential justification for a waiver, on the condition that they plant some of the trees. The density that they need could be accomplished by four three-inch caliber trees. To meet that, the minimum that has to be planted on something.
If council wanted those trees placed up on the, you know, up front there, that would have to be conditioned upon the approval from GDOT or just GED? They would have to review?
Yes.
Billboard's around?
It probably works.
If we could find a location for three to four trees nearby, would you be amicable to that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
I'm looking at that, I see space for three, I don't know about four, but it's not really the scale.
I think, I think there's some room for approval for something.
Yeah.
So, that's, sometimes you just get what you can.
I'm with you a hundred percent. Any, any other discussion?
Next item on the agenda is the annual U D O amendment. Any comments or discussion?
I have a comment, a request, actually. Um, I don't understand the designation that we have conservation, um, subdivision. I don't think that it, the way that it is being applied is, um, bit troublesome to me, and I would like to understand what, what, how are you, you address it now? And if you see any room for change or any, any reason to change it.
Okay. I can look into that, interesting information.
Okay.
Anything else?
I was just gonna make a comment about the, uh, you were talking, you were curious about the, um, the consistencies on the, uh, impervious space as it relates to industrial transitional. Uh, industrial transitional, I think, is sixty, isn't it?
It's eighty.
So industrial transitional is eighty, I think that is because we were coming down from, when it was created, we were coming down from the industrial, which had none. And so when we put it in, we were wanting to be, the whole purpose of the industrial transitional was to, to allow for anybody to do anything on the inside of the structure, but to make sure the exterior of the structure was up to snuff, so that it was a attractive neighbor to any professional use that could come in to allow for the transition of, of the land use. So, that's why we chose a very small number, uh, in order to be able to allow for maximum flexibility for that. Now, this is, this is, at this point, it's, you know, it's like six or eight years at this point, so, I can tell you that, um, you know, it's still important to make sure that we have maximum flexibility, but if you think that we need to bring that down, uh, I would have any opposition to that at all. Because that, that's the whole reason why we had it, was we were like, yeah, there's nothing for creating this opportunity to be able to kind of, start to kind of wiggle down into something that's more conventional. And instead of going right down to, cause we had the habit of going, okay, let's zone it to be perfect, and then it would create all kinds of hardships on ha- trying to get to that point. And so we, we took it down a notch, and if it needs to come down further, so be it, but that's, that's why it was eighty percent.
Okay, appreciate that. So, I don't know if I would ask some, try to, are there, is the, would it make more sense to put the eighty and the sixty, so the I was eighty and the I T was sixty?
I think only if you feel like it's necessary to, to further constrict the I T, I mean, I, I think it would be, I'm not as familiar with all of the I T around the city at, at this point, and what's developed, and I don't, you know, it's hard to keep track of this sort of stuff on a micro basis, but if you feel like, I think that would be a measure that we would take, uh, in the event that you felt like we were ready to go to the next step of, potentially, you know, what, what I would imagine will happen down the road is that, uh, I T will go away, because we'll, we'll be built out. Uh, except for maybe up around the, the auto dealers or something like that, so, I would say about a sixty percent, only if there was, uh, the need to take another step toward whatever you wanna call it, conformity.
Um, I've got two other point ones, I think, so the, um, the signage comment came from me, and it was primarily because residential realtor signs aren't ever sixty tall. And so, um, the discussion wasn't so much to bring that up for all signage, but to make sure that, um, we weren't eliminating those, because I think a lot of folks do drive by and look for those things and call off of them much more, so then they get on a commercial setting. And so I didn't want to create a situation where all of these things are coming online, it's not sort of compliance. Um, and so it was to gear, gear the signage requirements or regulations in residential districts to basically fit that box. So that, just want them to have clarity there and make sure there was no objection.
Yeah, I would say those, uh, six foot residential, like, uh, land, real estate signs are very typical. I mean, uh, my house, house beside it just went up for sale, so it must be my neighbor. They, uh, yeah, so, you know, they, uh.
It was a couple inches taller than you, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. So, yeah, so that, and that's definitely six foot, that's very typical, and it's very, I would, you know, I would, you know, real estate's have, they just have to buy new signs just for, uh, to be a channel.
The, uh, I'm sorry.
Trent?
Uh, well, I would like to comment that, um, we are talking about signs and not content, so, um, they would be allowed to, to have other content on them. We're referring to them as real estate signs, simply because that's what we typically think of. Uh, but, but I just wanna make a note that we are, uh, speaking of them, kind of in a content neutral way.
Yeah.
And, and, and thank you for making that correction.
You know, the only comment I have about the real estate signs is I, uh, it might be worthwhile sometime in the future to be able to.
I can't neutral.
To have the, uh, the smaller signs be for the slower speed limit roads, and the larger signs be for the, the busier roads, because I think the larger sign is necessary when you're going faster to see it, and if you're pepsing through town here at twenty-five miles an hour, you might not necessarily need such a large sign. And I would also think that, uh, as the city matures, uh, we're gonna probably get, get to the point where we might, uh, want to encourage them to create a permanent sign of some sort, uh, instead of always putting up some sort of a wood painted sign that might detract and it might look a little tacky coming through a nice, uh, a well, well-designed area.
I, so, I don't think it was pointed out in the news, but there is essentially, as part of this amendment, a further tightening of the signage ordinance outside of the signs that would typically be seen in residential neighborhoods. And so I'm, uh, where, where that came from for safety is, and who have them there and worth looking at, that's a concern.
I don't think I'm comfortable with changing with the size of the sign based on the speed of the road, and all, all these ones, that's, cause we have residents that could live on the higher speed roads.
Yeah, maybe, now, maybe in the future.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, the other one was the conversations from freestanding mailboxes, and that one also came from me, and I appreciate you looking into that. Um, I did speak to Councilwoman Robson about it, and I believe that she was one of the ones that originally raised concern of those, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you were more concerned with them being too far back from the road and blocking the sidewalk.
No, my main concern is that, um, I don't understand why a particular resident was required to get a permit for a mailbox. Um, it, it, it was not a cold mailbox, it was a, it was a brick mailbox, but, uh, that, that's not uncommon. Um, you know, people wanna match the facade of their house, um, and therefore, I, I don't know if they, uh, it, it, so I don't, I don't, I think that it's, um, overreaching to require that they get a permit for a mailbox.
I agree.
And I don't know that, they can't be that far back from the si- the sidewalk, if the post office has requirements as well, so it really doesn't have anything to do with that. Although, the only issue that I see is that these are, mailboxes are in the right away. And so, if the city wanted to come and put in sidewalks, if, if we get that rich, and every neighborhood gets to get a sidewalk, gets to have a sidewalk, I don't want then the city to be liable to replace a mailbox that would have to be torn down for a sidewalk, that's all, period.
So if I was.
You get a sidewalk.
So I would, I would propose maybe requiring a permit for anything bigger than twenty-eight by twenty-eight at the base, or twenty-seven by twenty-seven, or something in that range, which would be your, I think, your typical size for a brick mailbox. So I'd say twenty-eight by twenty-eight, just to be safe. Uh, anything else on the annual U D O amendments?
Yeah, there's just one, one other little thought that I had, which I'm sure is immaterial, but, um, by electric fences, we're not talking about dog fences, are we?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so, help me wrap my head around the cars in the driveway situation.
So, yeah, this came out of a code enforcement violation, excuse me, where, um, there were complaints about the number of cars, a person didn't live there.
Seven.
Seven cars in the parking lot, um, there's, there's issues with, so we do, there are codes from code enforcement in terms of inoperable vehicles and and car covers and those kinds of things, but it gets difficult, and people cover the cars, or they back them in, and it's hard to tell what is licensed and what is not, to help us determine what is operable or inoperable, so, in order to help with that challenge, uh, a recommendation was made that we consider just adding a blanket maximum on vehicles. Um, and this particular house was a, an occupied house, so that was the, um, reason for making it more restrictive, with the, the thinking being if you have a vacant house, really, there's questions about, does, is the principal use a house, or is it a principal use car parking lot, nobody's living there, so, just to clarify that, and then, um, and, and this amendment was drafted by a city attorney, and the, the second part was for, um, vehicles that, or homes that are occupied to limit the number of vehicles also, unless there's a certain number of, of licensed individuals in the house, um, that have driver's licenses, so.
Unless in the driveway.
Yeah, yeah, and, and this didn't, wasn't generated for me, so I honestly don't have a really strong opinion on it, I do think, or definitely for the vacant properties and storage of vehicles, I think it makes a lot of sense, I'm not as sure about the line of regulating someone if they can park the cars, that, I, I would defer to council.
Well, that's where I'm going with this, I completely agree, if, if the, if a house is vacant, it shouldn't be used for car storage, and I, I get all of that, but I think we're traveling down a very, you know, slippery road when we start telling people, I think it's very subjective, I mean, some driveways are lots longer than others, I mean, you know, not all driveways are the same size, so four cars in one driveway might look different than four cars in a different driveway that's much longer. Um, so I just, I just, I really question going down the road and telling how many vo- how many cars that they can have, if they're operable cars and they're being driven, how many cars that you can park in your, in your driveway, they're not parked on your grass, they're not parked on your lawn, and so.
I agree, that's a drastic problem that we really don't have at this point, um, and the second thing is it becomes kind of an enforcement nightmare to knock on somebody's door and show them your driver's license.
With your driver's licenses, come on.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so, I'd be in favor of keeping the first strike in the second.
Yeah.
Let, let the first light in the second, we just don't care.
Keep the, keep the, uh, the unoccupied housing, uh, enforce that, but, don't, don't enforce the.
Right.
No, we're not going around doing license checks.
No, but then, I think we also, you know, in the spirit of that, we can talk about the, uh, seems like there's a number of gravel pads that are popping up around towns that are probably, I don't, you know, that, that could contribute to this, they're not parking on the grass, they're parking on the gravel.
No, we, we proposed that twelve years, a long time ago, that's, that's not, that's not legal, you can't park in the side yard, you can't park off of the, uh, off the, off the, the park.
You can, you're gonna grow a pot.
It's, have.
But you can't, but we can't, you, you can't make the gravel, okay?
We do allow gravel on single-family residential.
Yep.
On the side, outside, outside of the designated, um, driveway?
Yep.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, if they have the gravel, it, they, so the only thing that would restrict it is you have to have a certain amount of, your front yard has to be grass or pervious, um, but other than that, yeah, other than that, and there's no restriction.
But so, I can throw gravel on my side, in, in my side yard setback, and just park my car over off of my, off of my, uh, driveway.
Well, you could, you could put a, a concrete driveway right up to your side, property line, also, or gravel, there's no setbacks for, uh, concrete driveways or patios, only structures.
I, no, no.
Sounds like an issue we may have to tackle in the, in the future.
I completely agree, because, because why are you not allowed to park on your, on your, um, grass? It just doesn't look good.
Yes.
It has nothing to do with oil dropping and seeping into the ground and all that kind of stuff, I tell you what, half the, well, not half, but one I have to stare at every single day, it, it, the gravel, uh, driveways, or if you wanna call them driveways, or parking pads and whatever, are horrible too, I think that they, if we're gonna allow them, um, they need to have, we need to, they, they need to be have, they need to have a border, they need to not leave their gravel onto the sidewalk, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be a lot more amenable to addressing that.
So, so it sounds like, yeah, cause the gravel, the gravel getting into the roadway and the offway is definitely, um, something I'm seeing.
Yeah.
We can look at options for that. Just to keep us moving forward, so, sounds like with this item, the limit of two for unoccupied homes will remain, moving forward, um, to next month, the limit of four for occupied homes would go away for council request, and, um, then look at adding supplemental regulations to avoid spillage of gravel on the driveways and make sure that it's undefined, um, boundary. And would that be for this amendment, or would that be for a future amendment?
I would, I'd be done. Okay, I just thought maybe we're, I might have rushed through it.
Do you have enough time for that, and would it be considered a, a minor amendment, the fact that we can do that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Of course.
So that is, if, you have that direction?
I just wanna know if it's going to a first read on Tuesday.
Without it, if, if there's no objection, that will move to first read on Tuesday?
Yes.
I don't know.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, multifamily inspections ordinance.
Yeah, this was a council-generated request, um, in your packet, you'll see, we provided a draft ordinance, uh, titled the, uh, standards for multifamily rental housing ordinance. This would be an amendment to the city code, uh, would require a first and second read. Um, uh, Councilman Hogan mentioned this previously in reference to Brookhaven's program, as you know, we currently have a apartment sweeps program for exterior areas. Uh, this would supplement that by requiring any multifamily development, which is defined as four or more units, um, to submit interior inspections by a third-party inspector that would be reviewed by the city, uh, the, the requirement would be that they submit twenty-five percent of those per year, and the timing of when that would be submitted would be when they file for their occupational tax certificate. That would be when they would be notified that they need to submit those twenty-five percent inspections, there's other details in your, um, packet. Uh, new developments would be exempt for the first, first four years, uh, because the assumption would be that they all went through a final C O inspection, they would be fined for four years. And then, existing buildings, and after four years, the, um, idea would be that, uh, every multifamily building would have a complete hundred percent of units inspected every four years.
My only comment is that you need property to make that five units or more, because a four-unit property is considered to be a residential dwelling and has a, an entire universe of different, uh, laws that, um, mandate what you can or can't do. Unless, unless, unless you, uh, saw something that was, um, important to making it four units or more, I would recommend you make it five units or more.
Okay.
Any.
Any objection from council to that change?
No, um.
And it's just rental property with the ownership.
What is, let's show in there anywhere the qualifications of the inspector?
It does, um, they, it's under, let's see.
I trust you, if you say it's.
Yeah, they have certified building inspector requirements, um, they have to be an architect, engineer, full certification from I C C, they have to have an active business license, an occupational tax certificate, and liability insurance.
So we're gonna provide this once?
Yeah, it's, it's basically just the property maintenance code, um, but there will be standards, they'll have to prove that they meet all, um, adopted city codes and the fire code and property maintenance code. So, there will be forms, city checklists, that they'll have to, the minimum standards they'll have to send out.
Well, no mold, water, hot water.
Exposed wires?
Exposed wires.
And the bigs?
The bigs.
So, refresh my memory, there's some wording in there that says that the inspector gets to choose the twenty-five percent and not the property owner?
Uh, wait, can you, do you know where that?
No, I'm asking, you know, I don't know if that's in or not, but I, I, I don't want property owners to be able to choose what units are inspected.
You can't, cause each unit has to be, each unit has to be, uh, over four years. Can we look into that?
You, you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
I mean, I see this all the time in the extended state business, you pick your, your, your best twenty-five rooms, and that's what's inspected, and the others are crap holes, but they don't get checked at, that time around.
They would have to wait until another year.
They would have to wait till the next year, so I, I, I'd like to see, uh, the inspector be able to come in and say, okay, I'm, these are the units I'm going to inspect today, not have the property owner direct them, wait in as they can protect.
But they'll, they'll have to check down a list, though, cause if they inspected, built units one through twenty-five, year one, and those would be off the list for year two.
I, I think you'd have to provide that list at least a certain amount of time in advance to give notice to the tenants, so maybe they'd have to have a, a list of unit numbers, and then they could pick from those which they would be going into, or say we're doing four one, four two, four three, four, four four, or something like that.
There are some state laws that we would have to consult here, because we can't inspect any units that are, um, occupied, so, um, I'm not sure that we will have the opportunity to choose every, uh, unit each year, but the goal, we can put something in there about the goal of every four years, having.
You can't inspect, you can't inspect ones that are occupied, you can't inspect ones that are occupied without the owner's permission or the, the renter's permission.
I'd have to consult the, the laws on that, but I believe that you have to have the owner's permission.
Cause, uh, cause, now you're, now you're almost mandating that, at this particular point in the inspection, that the. Now you're, now you're almost mandating that at this particular point in inspection that the, they have a twenty-five percent vacancy rate. That's what well, doesn't sound right.
And again, you're not saying that all of these inspections are occurring in one day. As people are moving in and out, as they become available, they can be inspected during a period of time.
And the, the goal is to have each unit inspected at least once every four years.
Correct.
Correct.
So uh the, the uh, the property owner can, they can choose, but you know, they can't, they can choose the same, the same twenty-five units.
Right. We, we will look into it. I just wanted to.
So that.
I was gonna say, I think other cities are doing it. I haven't really been to the real in this, right?
Right.
So, so I'm sending the objection out, move to first read, we'll stop looking into considerations uh discussed by council with interest in second read. Is there an objection?
And make a correction.
Yeah.
And make an correction to number of units.
You could have an unoccupied four unit.
Yep. Turn my microphone. So the next item on the agenda is the comprehensive plan update. Uh so it's public hearing, but really a complete council discussion. Anything from council? I've got one. So I know I, I gave you guys a hats off earlier for your public outreach. Uh and now I get to run my other hat and, and tell you guys that I'm pretty disappointed at the lack of outreach throughout the project council. Uh I know we had early meetings talking about some of the things we wanted to see. I know a number of us attended the public hearings. But I don't believe that anyone has asked anything since then. I shall reach out outside of a, oh, outside of one of the public meetings. I just think that's, that's a little bit disappointing. So it's not a comment on the result or the quality of what came out, but I would hope if you guys do that again, that you do reach out to those charged for governance a little bit more.
My only comment is uh the next time we do a major, I think we should take um a much more um, look, a lot more effort into uh soliciting people's addresses for the sake of being able to plot where the input for the plan is actually coming from.
Anything else? Tom?
It's a good, I like that. I like, I like Tom's idea, like the accident, you have the hot zones where obviously a lot of input is given. I think that the red area first with the green.
Yeah, that would be cool. Hard to do, but cool. Man, uh next item on the agenda, police parks finance, public works, economic development, nothing. No boards, authorities, and committees. The city attorney is not with us tonight. So no first and second read. Those will be on Tuesday, which leads, Councilman Mesa, I believe you talked about this one earlier, policies for intersection improvements and pedestrian safety.
I did. The request of action is to direct staff to research and propose amended policies for intersection improvements and pedestrian safety. The background on that is based on uh observations of construction in the mid-city district as well as around town. And recent conversations centered upon improving awareness of pedestrians at intersections in the city. I believe it's time to update the policies of the city related to related to intersection improvements at construction sites for pedestrian safety. Uh related to the intersections within the city, I'm asking staff to review policies and improvements that could improve pedestrian state, safety. These could include new road, road markings, traverse runable strips, and raised crosswalks. Uh and with construction sites in the city, I would like to see new policies implemented in our permitting process that improve pedestrian safety and access to sidewalks. After doing some research, I found an article that said applying the American with Disabilities Act in work zones, a practitioner's guide. That is, um I believe that should be a link in the, you know, if not, I'll send you, I'll send you guys a link on that. And uh I said, but the article presents numerous um options that the city and developers could utilize for future developments. It's a good read, so I'll send, I'll make sure I send you guys the link. And that's it. Is it? Oh, it's, oh, it's act, it's the whole thing. No, I didn't see that. I did, next page, sorry. Any questions?
So that will carry forward to Tuesday?
I'm, I'm asking you as the council.
Any objection that you can add forward? Any questions?
No questions.
Yes, because John wants to skip directions. Staff, correct? Heard him correctly. You, you want that to move forward or formal direction?
Motion to ask staff in the direction.
We just can ask council directs.
Yeah.
That will carry forward to Tuesday for a motion put through from Councilman Mesa. Uh the next one has a huge write-up. It's one of mine, so yeah, bless the company, you guys don't have anything on there tonight. Uh this one's really quite simple. Uh there's been a lot of conversation lately that's, that's come up. Uh largely it's turned out in the school re-districting neighborhoods and cities are, are different. And we have a number of neighborhoods that span multiple cities. And um I don't believe that there is a measurable distinction between the way those neighborhoods look, feel, and react um between municipal boundaries. And so this resolution, um so I want to thank the, the city manager for, for helping me draft. But really just defining what a neighborhood is and outwardly stating that we believe that neighborhoods should be consistent and not necessarily different based on cities, um on municipal boundaries, just like um the gentleman spoke earlier, his home actually being in two cities. And so I've been, I've been working with the folks and so.
Two, two houses.
So I've been working with the folks over in Brookhaven on making a joint statement, um basically to that effect. And the, where that happens, we, you know, we work and strive to be consistent. Uh at this point, there, there's been some hesitation um from them initially. They were all on board, particularly surrounding um a comment that reads, whereas Clarence Perry published his neighborhood theory in nineteen twenty-nine with basic principle being that neighborhood felt that should be the elementary school century located on a common or green. Um so they were, they're going to let us know on, by our meeting. If they are able to sign, be if there are any on Tuesday, if there are any changes they would request, potentially even being a strike through that um provision. If they do not choose to join us in this, and I'm hopeful they would based on discussions and what I've had with them, um pretty confident they will, but if they don't, I'm asking before with this, that we join a resolution with the same content on Tuesday.
Just as a joint resolution.
As an individual resolution. I apologize. It's a joint, full name.
Uh so I understand that.
So. I think we did that a month or two ago. So um I would ask council to move this forward and just note that there may be a minor change to being a singular resolution on Tuesday. Um we hear Laura's from Brookhaven.
Agreed.
Any objection?
No.
Yeah, so that will carry forward to Tuesday night. Citizen comments. Um does anyone stuck with us that wants to tell us something? You've got three minutes. Tell us what's on your mind. It's a monologue, not a dialogue.
You only have thirty minutes with us.
Name an address for the record because I didn't hear the first two times. I think you spelled it wrong.
I am still Louis Newmark, thirty-four hundred Malone Drive, number three twenty in Shambley. Um I'd like to compliment chief and staff for taking action on Malone Drive. Uh over the past week, things have seen, we've seen some significant improvements. There are barricades up over S L X. We still see a lot of deliveries coming in on that side. Uh but again, I want to reiterate that Malone Drive can, you know, cannot possibly support the existing developments in its current state. Uh we're about to experience a residential population nearly triple over the next twelve months on Malone, where there were five hundred people currently residing in condos and apartments with their only access or primary access onto or out to Malone Drive. Allow me to do the math for you. We're currently accustomed to the two hundred and fifty-five units on Malone Drive with the number of the units coming up at S L X and Tiva Malone. This will be increasing to over seven hundred and seventy units. This does not take into account nearing five hundred tenants at Oliver, formerly known as Alstead. Secondly, the continues of your shortage of apartment spaces, thirty-three D one Malone, where it's secure senior residences, about half the residents there currently park their vehicles at fifty-two thirty-eight Petrie Road and on the street. I understand that will continue to be the case um based on what the folks that, um, put, so that thing goes through. This is in addition to the shortage of apartment spaces for several hundred visitors that drive to Comcast for sessions occurring several times a day, Monday through Saturday, as there's never enough parking for all of them on the Comcast lots. But thirdly, the city has not shared any independent traffic studies that have been done showing a projected impact of the two mixed-use apartment retail buildings on Malone Drive of Tiva Malone and S L X, nor have any plans to support this dramatic increase in share with we, the taxpayer people of Shambley, the resident citizens of small businesses based on Malone Drive in particular. Um number four, it's clear to everyone that Malone Drive cannot sustain any further increase in traffic beyond the existing buildings and those currently nearing completion. Therefore, the city must require any plans involving multi-story redevelopment of fifty-two thirty-eight Petrie Road to use the Petrie roadside as the sole access for vehicular traffic with the exception of a fire lane on Malone Drive. The current plan is called for significant traffic of outpatient and service vehicles and their buses to use a lane on Malone Drive. This is a really bad idea, bad idea. That's, this will surely cause additional logjam for vehicular traffic on Malone Drive. We're here to conduct due diligence regarding the impact this project at fifty-two thirty-eight will have with residents and businesses located on Malone Drive. It's clear that we, the people of Shambley, that the due diligence that should have been done was not done previously by the council and staff to support intelligent roads on Malone Drive. It's time to make a change. Let's move forward. Your decisions will affect the lives of hundreds of citizens on Malone Drive, myself included, many of whom, such as myself, are homeowners and business owners and want.
Move to your turn. Just wrap it up.
Thank you very much. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your service. Thank you, Tom Hogan. Thank you, Leslie. Thank you, John. Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Steve Stan.
Thank you.
I approve this message.
Paid for by. Um would, would anyone else like the comments this evening?
Karen.
Hey. Sing us a song.
Come on, what up?
Do we have an executive session this evening?
Yeah. Some different.
Just say no.
You wanna help?
Just say no.
No, we do not need one.
Way out of here. We don't have to.
Motion to, what is this?
Yeah, I guess we don't have to. All right, we're out of here.
Motion to go home.
Motion to go to, you know.